Looks like Bill's the only one that's not here today. Approval of the October 23 minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read them? Is there any corrections or anything of that nature? And if not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Everyone has seen the agenda today. If there is any questions or discussions on it. Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve today's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. For our consent calendar. Morning PJ. That's all right.
Consent calendar?
Yes, sir.
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on on items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item three, conditional use permit review 8448 for Monique Newcombe, Tammy Murner, to review a mobile home in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 8448 with the owner's concurrence. Item four, conditional use permit review 9627 for Grabberell Miller, to review a single-wide mobile home in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 9627 with the owner's concurrence. Item five, conditional use permit review 1125 for Jeff and Karen Storm, to review an on-premise occupation, re-manufacturing of ammunition in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1125 with eight conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1425 for Jeff Devaney, to review two storage units to be located on the subject property in the highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1425 with 12 conditions. Item seven, minor plat 1739 and subdivision regulation variance 1712 for Bradley and Gloria Groth, how land surveying as the agent to reconfigure lot lines in order to create lot 2R and lot 3R of Harrington subdivision and to waive plating requirements, some plating requirements. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance 1712 and approval of minor plat 1739 with 10 conditions. Item eight, minor plat 1740 and subdivision regulation variance 1713 for Laura Pancrat, Ken Nash as the agent, to create lot 1 of Pancrat subdivision and to waive some plating requirements. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance 1713 and approval of minor plat 1740 with eight conditions. Item nine, rezone 1709 and comprehensive plan amendment 1708 for Carol Marso, DC Scott surveyors as the agent, to rezone 17.09 acres from general agriculture to low-density residential and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from plan unit development sensitive to low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of rezone 1709 and approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1708. Item 10, conditional use permit 1739, Colonial Pines Hill Sanitary District, Jim Martin as the agent, to allow for an office building on the subject property to serve the Colonial Pines Hill Sanitary District Administration in the suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1739 to December 4, 2017, Planning Commission meeting. Item 11, rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Great Western Bank Personal Representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates, to rezone 21.39 acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from plan unit development sensitive to suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 to the November 27, 2017, Planning Commission meeting.
Would staff like to pull any consent items?
No, sir.
Anyone from the membership like to pull any consent agenda items?
Sir.
Seeing none, anyone in the audience, all these consent items that have recently been read, if you'd like to have them pulled, please come forward, state your name, and let us know which item.
Charlie Johnson, number nine.
Any other member of the audience like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar with items three through eight, and then 10 and 11.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to item number nine.
Good morning, Cassie Bullstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item nine is a rezone and a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's a request to rezone 17.09 acres from general agriculture district to low-density residential district and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from PUD-sensitive to low-density residential district. The applicant here is Carol Marso. Did you want me to go through a brief of what this is, or would you just like to see what the question was?
We might be able to just see what the question is, and that way, before we go into a big detail overview.
Sure.
Maybe it's something simple. Charlie, do you have a question concerning this item?
Charlie Johnson. I'm not sure I really have a question. Had a chance to briefly read through the conditions, and they were extensive on it. Don't have any problem with people doing what they want to with their property. Always been for that. I have problems with density, and especially when it's an increase like this. There's already, in that area, what I would call a precedent-setting matter, and that's the property that you've got Dave Cobbish after Mr. Albert's property access that's already left in there. Then you have Dave Cobbish, then you have, I think, the Wilkerson property, and they have seven or eight RV-type hookups there, and they're allowed to use those, which was a really precedent thing at that time. There's no other area of really small lots and whatnot in the area, and I'm kind of concerned. We see a lot of it out there. Maybe the people that own it now are good neighbors and no problem dealing with them. Down the road, they sell. We're seeing more and more people have very little consideration for property. When I say they're using the four-wheelers, the maps clearly show that area's not to be used for motor vehicle use. Constant, tons of them. And now they're getting so big, they even have over 100 horsepower. And you hear them. This is a whole new muffler situation. It's everything else. People come right up to your lines. They sometimes cut your fences. Luckily, I haven't had that problem. I've faced public property on three sides. But you've got to be concerned about spot increases in density, because generations change, owners change, and that was my question. I think you really need to review what's going on here and the size of the piece of property and what they're asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Staff, do you have any input on this item?
The layout plat for this has been approved. I will say that during the layout plat process, they were planning on rezone or subdividing this into four lots. They've now gone down to three for the minor plat, so they've taken one out. The minor plat's going to be heard on the next meeting for you guys. So this is just the rezone to make that plating process be able to continue. But it is coming down to three lots from four. This is what their proposed plating looks like at this point.
As I say, I think I vaguely remember this particular one a couple months back, right?
Yes.
And there's like an access, not necessarily an access, but she was using an access along that southern property line?
Yes, yep, along that southern section line, and it actually went through Forest Service property. That's part, or that is why she went down to three lots. The Forest Service will not give her a special access permit to be using that, so that's why she went down to the three lots, because lots one and three will be accessed with that private access easement, and then lot two, that will actually come off of Mystic Road, will be the access. They left some frontage there.
Any current concerns from our part? I get it from the local neighbors in the area about density. Is there any concern on our part for density increasing in the area?
You know, not. She's, according to what I've been told, she's subdividing this in order to sell two of those lots. So, I mean, it definitely does increase density in that area by two lots. It is relatively large lots around there. I mean, you can kind of see it in this picture. She's surrounded by a lot of large areas and Forest Service property. So it would be smaller lots, other than the Wilkerson one right down here. They would be the smallest lots in that area.
Any dead-end roads or egress concerns we have?
No.
Okay. Any other?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The PD-sensitive area that's outlined in the photo, the picture at the right?
Yes.
Are those, I can't tell from the aerial photo, are those developed or undeveloped lots?
Those are, here, let me go to the, this lot down here is developed, and this one, and then these ones are developed as well. It looks like there's something on this lot as well. So most of them are developed.
Most of them are larger acreages?
Yep.
Like, in the range of how big?
I would say the Wilkerson one is probably the smallest, and I believe the Wilkerson is, we just reviewed a CUP on that one. I would say the Wilkersons have at least a couple acres still.
Okay.
Well, they must have at least three, because it's low-density residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you don't see any problem with, if there are two additional houses put on that property with drainage for the septics or?
There's actually already two houses out there. There is a house on lot three, and there is also a house on lot one already. Both of those lots already have a septic system on them. Lot one has a septic system on it that we were not aware of. According to Carol, it was put on in the 70s. We have requested some information from her regarding what that system is, because we were unaware that it was out there. So she is supposed to be providing that information, and so lot two would be the only one that doesn't currently have a house on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for?
Mr. Chair. Access to lot two would be how, by how, along the section line or off of Mystic Road?
Off of Mystic Road. They left enough frontage right in here to come off of Mystic Road.
And the Highway Department's okay with that?
They'll have to get an approach permit, but yes, the Highway Department didn't make any comment about that.
Okay.
Any other questions from the membership? Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item?
Good morning. My name is Kenneth Argens. This is my son here, Christopher Argens. We own a property right across the road from there. First, I want to say, I'm not really privy to what goes on here. I'm kind of disappointed that there's already been decisions made on this property. But anyway, I own the property right across the road from there. If you're not aware of it, it's a historic ghost town called Redfern. It's a railroad siding. I've owned the property since 1982. It was first used in 1876. But anyway, my concern is that the, my well is groundwater out there, and according to the atmospheric conditions, I can see that my water changes color. When there's a, when I have a burn pile, it turns gray, and when it's really dusty on the road, it turns red. So what I'm saying is that the water supply is very limited out there, and since I'm adjacent to that, I'm concerned that there will be pollution from a sewer system into my water system, and then also it'd be depleted because of the fact that there's going to be these additional houses and residences go up here. So I don't know if this is something that will affect your decision, it's already been made, or something for discussion, or something of that sort, but these are some real strong things that we have in opposition to this.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Laurie.
Do you own, could you bring up the photo again that shows the zoning? I just want to understand where it is. There's a strip of limited ag. Is that yours? The green?
Yeah, the green part right there. That's.
You own the whole section there? Because it looks like there's two lots.
Oh, no, the top part there, that's about nine acres. That's owned by the Peckage family.
Okay, and those are limited ag?
That's school and land. There used to be a schoolhouse there.
Okay, do you guys live there?
Yes.
You live on the property?
Right.
Okay.
I just finished a building. I have a building permit for another building there now.
Okay, and then the lot to the north of you, somebody lives there too?
Yeah, that's separate property.
Yeah, I know, that's someone else's, but, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address? Come on up, sir.
I'd like to echo my father's concerns, is that I feel like you maybe need to have a hydrology study regarding the sewage runoff that might be happening. Depletion of the well is also a concern, but that land is really rocky, and my father's lot is downhill from that, and it's kind of, as she's explaining, the house that is on the existing lot, I don't know how to bring that up. So, on lot one, you see a little structure there?
Uh huh.
That was a tiny little cabin, and the lady who'd owned that, nobody was ever in there, so I mean, I don't think it's fair to call that a house. It was a building that maybe somebody lived in at one time, but, and then hers being farther back, those are just my concerns with the additional sewage and water. And the fact that the county didn't even know that there's a sewage system out there kind of makes me concerned about what kind of oversight we're going to have.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, Cassie, can we ask you a question? You said that there are two existing sewage systems. The one on lot one will be reviewed, you said, or re-permitted, or?
Yes, she is supposed to be providing information about that one.
Okay.
I had a conversation with her. She said it was installed in the 70s, and she said that she got it pumped, so she is supposed to be sending us the observation form, as well as she was supposed to have a certified installer locate the drain field and find the drain field size, and also potentially do some percolation tests if need be.
For the benefit of the people in the audience, could you explain the process that occurs when somebody, like, for example, if someone purchases lot two, if they wanted to put in a septic system or a water supply system? And I'm assuming there's probably water supply right now on lots one and three. You know, just to describe to them, you know, how they look at, you know, whether or not you have water rights and putting in a septic system? Because it seems like those are some concerns the audience has.
Sure. And as far as the onsite wastewater treatment systems, our staff has oversight over those. The wells, we do not. That is through the state. I know the individual wells, they can go up to 18 gallons a minute and get a water right permit. Typically, the water, or the well drillers get those permits for the property owners. As far as onsite wastewater treatment systems, we require percolation tests and profile hole information. And typically, we require profile holes prior to doing any other thing to make sure that the soils in the area are conducive of having a septic system. So that is the first thing. If it's very rocky or there's bedrock present, there's alternative systems that may have to go in, or mound systems, ET beds, or an alternate location where they do have soils that would be more conducive for a system. And as far as that house, when we look at for issuing operating permits, our first thing is to look at address points. We were not aware that that was a residence at all. It was, it never had an address point, and it doesn't have an address point. So at that point, when we do our review and go through our GIS system, that wouldn't have come up. That would have came up as an outbuilding.
And that's the one on lot one?
Correct.
Okay. Could you also explain why you weren't aware of the septic system on lot one?
Because it didn't have an address point, and so we assume that if it has an address point, it's a residence, it's occupied. It's kind of in our system. Otherwise, we assume that it's an outbuilding. That's the only way that we can have. Otherwise, we would be trying to track down every single building in the county and through things like this is typically how we find them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I just?
Yes, go ahead, Kevin.
Have a follow-up, please. Would you go over again the process with the state of South Dakota for the water? Because I thought that up, you know, these small wells, like a homeowner just drills, the only requirement is to just send in the well log once they construct the well. There's no requirement to get, you know, a priori approval of water rights, is there?
No, there is not. So they can, they can go up to 18 gallons a minute. There still is a permit that they get, that the driller gets, and then they do their nitrate and their bacteria sample and send that in, and then they do have the log of, you know, what they drilled, and a general vicinity of where it is. They don't do an exact location, and then they put it in the database, but it's pretty basic.
Yes. So, you know, my point is, is that if there was a system in place, either at the county or state level, that had some concern about water quantity, you know, is there enough water to serve everybody? Some of these density issues would kind of take care of themselves, because there's not enough water in the Black Hills groundwater to, in my opinion, to support the level of development that people want to have, because they want to live there, but water's an issue. But I don't really see, I've not seen thus far, any system, you know, any process, because we don't take into consideration water, you know, in these kind of decisions. The building permits don't take into consideration water access, do they? I mean, they can get water from anywhere, and the state really doesn't have a system, except for these big industrial wells, to worry about, is there enough water for everybody? So it, to me, that does fall through the cracks, and so it's sort of a difficult issue to grapple with.
All right. Any further questions? No? Would anybody else in the audience like to speak on this item?
Charlie Johnson. To be fair to Carol, we keep talking about this other house. I believe from my time a number of years ago on the commission, there's a vacation home approval on that, isn't there? Wasn't there? At one time? I believe, I'm pretty sure it was. It was even inspected to make sure that they didn't, they weren't supposed to have cooking facilities in it, but I do not know where the water comes from. I don't want to try to answer that question. But in fairness to Carol, there was a permit, I believe, on that for a guest house.
Not a vacation home, a guest home.
Maybe a guest home.
Yeah.
Yeah, related to the, when it was all one lot other than the small one. And when you say Wilkerson, I assume Wilkerson's bought that small piece that used to be Dave Larch?
Yeah, the Wilkersons own that lot one of May West subdivision, directly to the south.
Yeah. Okay, and there is people using that section line as an access right now, or that's been a road for a long time.
Yes.
Through there.
Yes. And according to the Forest Service, the lot one of May West subdivision, the Wilkersons, they do have an application for a private road easement on file with the Forest Service. And then there's actually another lot back. This lot, that lot with the red X, they also take access through the Forest Service. The Forest Service doesn't have an application for a private road easement on that one, however, it's been there forever.
Anyway, I just thought they should do some research. I'm almost sure there was rights to a guest house, and that that's why that building is there. It's not like, and they certainly would have had to put a septic in if they had a right, but I remember Dan mentioning something about going out and inspecting that there wasn't a refrigerator and a stove and that sort of thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further comments from the audience?
So would we be able to delay action until they do a percolation test to evaluate for whether the sewer would work on that?
If the property owner doesn't even plan on putting a sewer on there, why make them do that? I mean, the property owner may decide to buy it. If she sells it and somebody decides to buy it just for hunting land, I mean, there's all kinds of things that could happen. Why would you mandate that prior to?
Well, isn't the purpose of this to subdivide for future residents? Shouldn't we answer that question looking forward, especially since it was zoned as sensitive before?
That's, their goal is to sell it to someone else who has it for that mind, but like, and I'll just be honest, I'm always looking for land, but I might look for land for a different reason. It might be subdivided for something else, but if I can go do what I want on that land that fits in the criteria, I might not want to put a home on it. You know what I'm saying? I might want to use it for something else. Any other questions?
Just to be clear, the action today is the rezoning of this. Down the way, there will be the minor plat, which will actually create these lots. Is that right?
That's correct. And she will be, just to clarify, she will be required to submit the septic information on that, what will be lot one. She will be required to provide that before the plat can be approved.
And down the road, if there is a building permit applied for, the part of that will be to confirm that the soils and such are appropriate for a septic system. Isn't that right? And if not, then they have to come up with some alternative?
Correct, yes. If she's building something that would require a septic system, then yes, she will be required to follow the process.
Right, okay.
Any further questions? If not, current recommendation is to approve of rezone RZ 1709 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 1708. I would entertain a motion in some form or fashion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Takes us to item 12.
Item 12 is layout plat 1738 to create lots A, B, and C and D of Johnson Estates subdivision. The applicant and agent is Great Western Bank for Dorothy Johnson Estates. Surveyor is baseline surveying. The request is, the staff recommends to continue layout plat 1738 to the November 27, 2017, Board of Commissioners meeting, as the applicant has some permits to obtain prior to that approval.
Any questions for staff?
Do you want a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we continue layout plat PL 38 to the November 27 Commission meeting, Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item 13.
Thank you.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environment and Planning Supervisor. Item 13 is a request for a vacation home rental in a multifamily unit. This was previously heard before you guys to get a conditional use permit for a multifamily unit. He had originally submitted an application for a vacation home rental back at the end of the summer, and when we did a site visit, we had determined that there was actually two residences in the structure, so he was required to get a conditional use permit for a multifamily dwelling unit and have the request re-advertised as such. So this is the request in front of you. Currently, as the property exists today, it's 1.77 acres. It's zoned general agriculture district, which is illegal non-conforming as it was platted prior to the adoption of our ordinance. The legal access to the property is off a 10-foot private roadway easement that runs to the north of the property. The lot contains a single-family residence, which was built in 2015, but during an inspection, it was found that it's actually a multifamily residence. There is an onsite wastewater treatment system, and there is special flood hazard area on this property, which includes floodway. The one thing that staff did determine during this review was that our Pennington County zoning ordinance defines a vacation home rental as any dwelling unit that is rented for pay or other consideration leased or furnished in its entirety to the public on a daily or weekly basis for more than 14 days in a calendar year, and is not occupied by an owner or manager during the time of rental. In discussions with the applicant, he wanted to rent different portions of the property or the units at different times to different people, maybe long-term, maybe short-term. He wasn't real clear on what he wanted to do, so staff kind of discussed that, and that's how we came up with condition number one, based upon our zoning ordinance and how it defines a vacation home rental. We had felt that the whole, the whole unit would have to be one unit or separate vacation home rental conditional use permits would have to be obtained for each unit, the upper and the lower. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 1730 with 18 conditions with that in consideration.
Any questions for staff?
Did anything else come back in after this was re-advertised?
No, I did not receive any complaints or concerns. The only thing that came about was that definition and that concern about the vacation home rental, because we have never, we have because we have never, we have had a request for a vacation home rental in the past, and I think it was, it ultimately denied or withdrawn, I believe.
Kathy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, uh, have two questions. Uh, one is that, um, I drove there yesterday and just to see, just to kind of get an idea of that road going down into the properties. It's not driving it, it's not quite as steep as it appears, you know, it looks from the, from three eighty-five. But I really, the number ten, condition number ten, where it says that the, uh, the address should be posted, uh, where there's a split in the driveway, so it's clearly visible from three eighty-five. I'm not sure that that can be done. I mean, it's, unless you know exactly where to look from the highway, you're not gonna see where that split in the driveway is.
Correct. And when I had talked to the addressing coordinator, he would have to post his address here and then at the split in the driveway, which is about here.
So they'd have to be posted clearly from the highway?
Correct. It would have to be at the two locations, and then each unit would have to be at the split of the driveway.
I see. So condition ten is that, doesn't, to me, that doesn't really say that, that it's gonna be in two locations. And then the other thing, which has nothing to do with this, but, uh, it's, you know, those other two houses that are a little further down, their addresses aren't posted. Uh, in one, there's one, at three eighty-five, there's a little tiny sign for one of them. But why aren't they posted so that you can clearly see? It's very confusing driving down because there's no, there's, you know, that, there's no, that's not a street. And so that's just a long driveway off of three eighty-five. So there's no sign there to know where to turn because it's not like you're looking for a green highway sign, you know? And then there's no signs that you're, that we've become familiar with, posting the address, the numbers. And so it's very, that intersection, that little corner is really difficult to, to find.
As a side note, to your side note, um, you're correct. Addressing in the county is inconsistent. We regulate it through our office. Nine-one-one makes recommendations. Uh, EMS and the fire coordinator make their recommendations. I know there is work being done to have some more uniformity throughout the county, um, and more enforcement, not just through our office, but through others. And if the people behind them had any permits with us, as far as any new permits, uh, we would definitely address the addressing issue. But improper addressing is a nightmare in the county. And I know from hearing from the fire coordinator that there are a lot of emergency technicians that are very upset when they go past the property and someone's in distress and they have to turn around and come back because it was spray painted on a piece of cardboard and nailed to a tree instead of with a, with a reflective background with, with contrasting numbers.
Right, yes, okay. So, but I, I think that, I guess my suggestion would be to change the language a bit in ten so to make sure that the, that there's going to need to be an address posted on three eighty-five or at that, you know, at that corner. The other thing is, when I was there yesterday, they're building, there's a structure being built right to the north of that house. What is that?
They, um, just recently submitted a building permit for a garage.
Oh, okay.
So they did submit that building.
That has been permitted, okay.
I don't know if it's been approved yet. It has not been approved yet.
Well, it's under construction.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the, uh, uh, audience like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. The current recommendation, uh, is to approve conditional use permit seventeen thirty with the following eighteen conditions. With number ten, um, clarifying the wording on that, that there'd be two different sites. Is that what you're looking at, Kathy? Um, Brittany, what is your thought on how to make that clear on item number ten?
Sure, it would say at the split, at the driveway and at, um, I guess we could call it at the entrance, at the easement to three eighty-five and the driveway?
That's, that's what I said.
Okay. In accordance with Pennington County Ordinance twenty.
In accordance with, gotcha. So that's the recommendation. Uh, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
So good.
Motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Who, I need, who did the first and the second?
Um, motion.
Laurie's, okay.
There you go. Mark and Laurie. That carries us to item fourteen.
All right. Item fourteen is a conditional use permit review. Um, this is CU twelve twenty-seven. This is a review of a vacation home rental. Um, the staff report says in a low-density residential district. This is actually in a suburban residential district. Um, and the applicant here is Mike Dressler. Um, this has been a pretty contentious conditional use permit. That's why I did not put this on the consent agenda. Um, and the applicant is here, um, and I think he would like to, to make some comments as well. So I'll just go through this briefly. This conditional use permit was originally approved in two thousand and twelve with nine conditions. Um, it was extended in two thousand and thirteen and extended again in two thousand and sixteen. Um, in May of this year, we received a complaint regarding an unlicensed ATV that was coming and going from the vacation home rental, um, and a complaint of trespassing. Um, so there was a couple ordinance violation cases that were open and investigated by the, um, county ordinance enforcement officer. Um, at that time, the ordinance enforcement officer found that, um, those complaints were not in violation of the conditions of approval for this conditional use permit, and they were reported to the sheriff's office as trespassing is more of a, a sheriff's office issue than our offices, um, something that our office can take care of. Um, so those two ordinance violation cases were closed at that time. Um, then in July, we also received another complaint regarding trespassing and smoking issues related to the vacation home rental. Um, a copy of that complaint should be in your staff report. Um, and that complaint was again investigated, um, and not, and found to not be in violation of any of these conditions of approval. Um, on August twenty-first of this year, um, staff did have a conversation with the applicant, Mr. Dressler. Um, he stated that he was aware of the complaints that were filed, and he wanted time to put together a, a statement, and he also wanted to be present at the planning commission meeting when this conditional use permit review was heard. Um, so ultimately, this conditional use permit review was continued, um, at the August twenty-eighth planning commission meeting to this meeting. Um, so just as a little bit of an update, on October thirtieth, we did receive a letter in opposition to the extension of this conditional use permit. A copy of that should be included with your staff report. Um, and staff is making a couple of recommendations in terms of the conditions on this conditional use permit. Um, we do recommend to amend condition number one to reflect the number of guests that are allowed overnight versus during the day. Um, previously, the condition had just stated, um, that it be allowed to have a maximum occupancy of eight people. Um, it didn't specify the whether that was overnight or during the day. Um, so we recommend to amend that condition to make it more consistent with other vacation home rental conditions. We also recommend to add three conditions of approval requiring an emergency evacuation plan, um, posting of an interior informational sign, and notification of the local contact change to surrounding neighbors. Um, I will say that Mr. Dressler was already doing these things before I put that condition in there, um, the last time I was out at this. At this vacation home rental, there was already a sign posted on the inside. Um, he already provides an evacuation plan. Um, so he was already meeting most conditions. Um, we just put him in there, um, for consistency purposes. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the extension of this conditional use permit with ten conditions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, would the agent or individual like to speak on behalf of the item?
Good morning, commissioners. I guess, um, I'm asking for your, um...
Go ahead and state your name, sir.
Oh, Mike Dressler. Um, I'm the owner of Deer Metal Lodge. I'm just asking that you will extend my conditional use permit and that I've been in compliance with the CUP since day one and, um, done everything the county has asked me to do. And, um, I know there's been, uh, some of my neighbors have sent in a few, um, they think violations, but I really believe that they're, they're not, I'm still in compliance with my CUP. It's just they're putting in complaints just, I think, to get my CUP taken away. So any questions?
Any questions for?
I do.
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, one of the complaints was about smoking.
Yeah, one, one of the neighbors, actually, I got into like a little bit of a, uh, email back and forth with her, and she said she saw one of my, um, people staying at the, at the house, they were smoking by the garage. And, and I said, "Well, okay, I'll let them know not to." So I guess I never knew it's illegal to smoke outside.
Uh, is it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of either.
I guess it doesn't really matter, but I just was thinking, is there some, is there some rule here that I'm not aware of?
No, she, the, the person is just, they're just trying to do everything, uh, they can to get my conditional use permit taken away.
Any other questions? Mark?
Um, I'm, the letter that he sent, that, uh, one of your neighbors sent in talks about covenants in that area. Um, are you under restriction by covenants and are you abiding by those covenants?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Because he talks about, uh, not being able to run a business in that, according to the covenants in that neighborhood, that you're not supposed to be running.
Right, and I believe the county says that a vacation home is allowed use. It's not considered a business.
Okay.
I, I believe we've actually had that extensive conversation here with Legal, and if you would like a, just a quick overview, she can definitely give us the insight to this one.
And, uh, Chairman, uh, Lester, one thing I took from the last meeting, you said that, uh, it's really more of a neighborhood issue and that you guys should come together and try to work this out. Well, since a year ago, I've sent emails to my neighbor, um, neighbors four times quarterly, asking them if they'd like to meet and, and go over if there's any issues I can help with. And I've gotten two people email me back and said, "Mike, it's nothing about the issues. It's just they don't want me to do what I'm doing." And I see in the, the response that the one person put in here saying that she never received my email. She did because I also sent it to her father-in-law, and her husband asked me to take him off the list. And the other thing is, um, I was, I had a hard time getting everyone's email because the road district president would not give me nobody's information. So I was doing it all on my own. But I did reach out four times this last year, asking if they want to meet, and they did not, um, cut, they did not ask to meet. And I said, "I just want to be a good neighbor." So I, that's one thing I took away last year from you, Mr. Lester.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office. Covenants are civil contracts, and generally, if a party to that contract believes in others in violation, uh, they have standing to file a civil complaint within circuit court to enforce the terms of those covenants. One of the reasons our office has, uh, continued to recommend that covenants should not be a consideration of the planning commission or the board of commissioners is just that it's a civil agreement. Also, you would essentially be sitting as a court of law in interpreting the intent of the provisions of that private contract. And, um, for that reason, we've always recommended that covenants really are not the proper, um, it's, it's really not the board's, um, position to enforce those covenants. You could end up having to enforce whether it's a pick-up fence or chain link fence or what type of roofing it is. Also, there, there, although the South Dakota Supreme Court has not ruled on this issue yet, there is quite a bit of case law throughout the country as to what it means to run a commercial business. So often, when complaints are made, actions are filed, it centers on a provision that says no commercial business. But what the majority of the jurisdictions have determined to date is that a VHR is not a commercial business for the reason that they are focusing on the actual use. So, um, although VHR is perhaps for the owner, become a commercial business or some, uh, device to generate revenue, the actual use of the property by the occupants is still residential in nature, and that seems to be the basis of those decisions. But again, every covenant is different. It's gonna depend on the definitions of the terms, um, the specific provisions. Um, there might be statutory definitions that apply. And for that reason, um, if you look at the VHR ordinance, uh, which is section three nineteen F fourteen, it specifically states that in granting or denying a conditional use, use permit for a vacation home rental, the planning commission and/or board of commissioners may consider the provision of a restrictive covenant which expressly and specifically excludes a vacation home rental. And, um, again, for all the reasons I've previously stated.
Very good. That's completely understandable, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Mike, just out of curiosity, have you heard anything about any changes of the covenant? Has anybody?
No, and I've talked to several of my neighbors, Mr. Chairman, and I've told them, I said, "I'm for, if you guys want to change the neighborhood covenants, I would be glad to sign on, you know, sign and be part of it." I mean, not my property, but, but I said, "You can do it to the rest of the properties in the neighborhood." And they still have not decided to do it.
Okay. Any further questions for, for Mike?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Um, and maybe it's for staff, but one of the letters in here indicates that the sheriff's been called several times, and, uh, they've been copied to the complaint division and have reference numbers, yada, yada. Is there, is there any information regarding those and what were those about?
Um, I do believe that, um, in a couple of instances, our ordinance enforcement officer did verify with the sheriff's department um, that calls were made. Um, I know there was one instance where a call was made, but the sheriff did not, um, come out. Um, and I believe those were surrounding the trespassing issues, um, that she had mentioned in her complaints to us.
And the funny thing is, is, is I've never heard of any, I've never, when things happen like the trespassing or the, um, the things that, that they're calling the sheriff, they've never called me or my contact person. I mean, with our VHR, we have a contact person and everyone knows who that, that person is. And they've never contacted my contact person or me, except, you know, now she's complaining that day there was trespassing. Well, how can I help if they don't call me? And, uh, she, she mentioned that she called my contact person a couple of times and he's never responded. Well, I do have a letter right here from my, he's, uh, my brother, Howard Dressler. He's the chief warrant officer of the state of South Dakota, and, uh, he has a letter right here stating he's never been in contact from anyone. And...
Just out of curiosity, do you have any kind of property boundary signs or anything that distinguishes the, your property boundaries? Just out of curiosity?
Um...
That's easily recognizable?
I mean, I mean, the road, the Deer Metal Drive goes between, I mean, the people that stay there, I mean, and they say they take walks, they typically walk right on the road. And the funny thing is, the person that put, put in the complaint, she lives behind a gated fence. So I don't see how they walked on her property.
Unless they climbed the fence.
Unless they climbed the fence.
Well, my next question is, do any of your neighbors have property boundaries or markings either?
No, well, there, there is, but it's, they're not gonna walk over the fence. I mean, I think, my opinion is she was disingenuous.
Just asking a question.
Yep.
Gotcha. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Laurie.
Um, let's see, you've had this as a vacation home rental since two thousand and twelve?
I've had it since two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, okay. Um, have, is it typically rented or, um, do people stay there year-round typically?
Yes.
Um, can you, like, describe like an average?
I'd say I, I rent it probably a hundred and, a hundred and fifty days a year.
Okay.
I rent, you know...
Like for a week at a time?
June, July, August, September, those four months are pretty solid.
Okay.
And then the rest of the year, fall, spring, and winter sporadic. Four or five, you know, it's usually four or five days, you know, a few three days.
Okay. You don't have like a minimum stay required or?
Three nights' day.
Three-night minimum?
Yep.
So the, the most it turns over is twice a week?
Right, yep. And I do also give my place to different charities in Sioux Falls. I'm a Realtor, and I've given them to, um, uh, our church, and I've given them to Peak Cancer, um, benefits. So I've done that. Ducks Unlimited, I've given it to Rocky Mountain Health Foundation. So, and I have given it away quite a bit, so probably at least two or three stays a year.
Any further questions for Mike?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, son.
Um, Mr. Dressler, I see there's a number of lots in, on these roads, Deer Mountain and, or Deer Meadow and Whitetail. Um, of that number of neighbors, I'm just wondering about how many of them are actually making a complaint?
Um, I think pretty much, I mean, I'm gonna say most of them. I mean, they're, because they're a tight-knit community and they all talk. And they don't want, you know, it's like their own community. And I would say, you know, um, there's probably two or three that are okay with me doing it, and the rest, you know, they're all, they're all friends and they all don't want me... and they all don't want me to do it.
Okay, just curious.
Yep.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other members of the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing none, there is a recommendation to approve the extension of CUP 1227 with the following 10 conditions. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
For approval. Moved by Mark.
Seconded then.
Seconded by Rich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15.
Thank you, Cassie. Item 15 is layout plat 1736 to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot 7 of Block 8 in Sunset Ranch. Applicant and agent is J K R K Properties LLC for Ryan Kasky. Landowner is Randy Havelson, and surveying engineer is Spurley Consulting, and there is representative in Spurley here with us today. What you're looking at basically is Lot 7 of Block 8, and Government Lot 3, Government Lot 4, Les Sunset Ranch, and a whole bunch of other stuff. There is a, an existing single-family residence on existing Lot 7, and what the applicant is looking to do is take a portion of the unplatted property and consolidate it with the existing property to make that. This, and also, I'm sorry, I almost forgot this, and also to dedicate .12 acres of additional right-of-way dedicated to the public on 229th Street. There is extensive history of this, of this subdivision, it's been around for some time, and that's mainly in your packets. This was routed through to interdepartmental review. Highway Department has made a recommendation, and I'll just read what they wrote. As it stands now, Lot 7R would be partially in Sunset Ranch Road District. Highway Department would like to see Lot 7 be removed from Sunset Ranch Road District so that Lot 7R is not in the road district since they affront a county road. The register deeds and equalization just had some minor adjustments to the information that's located on the plat. The county officer, when he was out there doing a routine site visit for us for the staff report, had noticed that there was an additional resident, additional structure that was put up on the property. And basically, seeing it from the road, it was this one right here behind the propane tank. This morning, the landowner came in and applied for a building permit with the property penalty fees, but that building permit, that building permit has not been approved, as he was at our desk at eight o'clock this morning. We appreciate the quickness of that response. The applicant's request will decrease density within the development by one lot, and for purposes of the layout plat, staff finds no major concerns with the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval of layout plat 1736 with 12 conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Lori.
The unpermitted structure, is that a storage shed?
We don't know yet, we didn't go on the property.
Oh, because I can't really tell.
Yeah, all I was told is that the building permit had been applied for, and I haven't seen it yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Is there anything of, I mean, you know, that we should know about that's in the materials that were on our desk this morning? I mean, don't these apply?
That has to do with an additional item, that has to do with item 17.
Oh, 17, okay, not this one, okay.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for PJ? All right, would the applicant like to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience like to speak on? Seeing no one in the audience that would like to speak on this item, recommendation is to approve layout plat 1736 with the following 12 conditions. I would entertain a motion.
I'll recommend approval of layout plat PL 1736 with 12 conditions.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do you annotate that Mark wasn't here for that vote? Okay. Item number 16, 17?
16.
16.
Item 16 is layout plat 1737 to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot 6R of Block 9 in Sunset Ranch. Applicant and agent is J K R K Properties LLC, Ryan Kasky is the owner. Property owners, or other property owners is Michael and Lampren Schindler, and Spurley Consulting as a surveying agent, and they are in the audience today. What you're looking at is basically Lot 6 and Lot 5. Lot 6 has a single-family residence and a mound system and an existing pole barn, and all the structures on that property, as far as we can tell, are permitted and in compliance with the county ordinances. What they're looking to do is essentially take those two properties, the property to the west, and consolidate it with the existing property to the east. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. And again, just the register deeds and equalization had a couple little minor things with the wording on, on the plat. Other than that, the applicant's request will decrease density within the development by one lot, by consolidating the two existing lots, and for purposes of layout plat, staff finds no major concerns with the applicant's request. Therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat 1737 with 11 conditions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, would anybody in the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing no audience, members want to speak, the recommendation is to approve layout plat PL 1737 with the following 11 conditions. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of layout plat PL 17-37 with the 11 recommended conditions.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alan, 17.
Item 17 is planned unit development review 1603, to review a planned unit development to allow for a specialty resort development, to include uses such as vacation hominials, weddings, receptions, picnics, family reunions, parties, single-family residences, bed and breakfast, storage, you know, storage gift shops, spa, cabana, bistro, detached accessory structures with living quarters, duplex, et cetera, on the subject property. As you can tell, for those who have not seen this before, there, there is extensive history with this planned unit development, as they were trying to do something a little bit different than we normally will see. And it was approved originally on December 6 by the Board of Commissioners with 45 conditions, and approved again for, after a review on May 2 of this year by the Board of Commissioners with 43 conditions. What brought this review up is there is a tent on the subject property that was permitted as a temporary structure, when it was last, when it was, I think, over a year, I can't remember how long ago it was. But the commissioners wanted to see if there were any complaints that came in, or any issues with the tent being up, and, because the applicant is looking to have that tent placed as a, permitted as a permanent structure. Right now, we don't permit tents as permanent structures, they're temporary. There are a lot of tents up in the county that do, there is one that has a temporary permit from, I believe, 1980s, and it's still up. We're kind of using this and seeing how the board, the Planning Commission and the board feels about tents being up that long in the county, because if this one ends up not being approved for a permanent permit, then we would have to look at the other existing tents in the county. If they, it is approved for, as a temporary structure, with a temporary permit, we'd have to figure out what that timeline is going to be. Normally, in the stuff that we have found, it's no longer than 12 months, no less than 180 days, or no longer, it's in that span of time. So we have to see kind of what happens here. But again, there are other tents in the county that are, that are up. So some updates from the last time that it was reviewed, there have been additional complaints that have come in about the use, the planned unit development use of this property. There is a bed and breakfast on the subject property. They do have lights on, around the building. I believe the sheriff's department has been called several times because of the lights on in certain times of the night, and also some loud music, and I believe the applicant has submitted some of the 911 calls and the dispositions of those calls, and you have those in front of you. That, this is that packet you were talking about with the memo on top, that's the stuff that was received on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I printed a lot of it off last night when I was in, and then some of it this morning. So if there's anything that's came in after eight o'clock, we don't have it. So some of the things that we are looking to change with this review is, one thing you need to consider is the tent, that's the first thing. Staff did not make a recommendation on the tent as a permanent structure, because we don't know which, which direction you want to go for one, but staff would not like to see tents permitted as permanent structures. Again, everything that we can find in my discussions with the fire coordinator is that tents shouldn't be permanent structures. Again, there are tents that have been up for years inside the county, not saying that's right or wrong, but that is out there. This structure also has two different rooms in the back. They were originally applied for as a separate kitchen and a separate bath structure. The applicant had mentioned they were going to be made out of brick. Since then, the applicant has changed those and asked if they could be built onto the cement slab. Since then, in visiting the property, it appears that those structures were not made out of brick, they're made out of wood with some paneling, and they do not look like, if you took the tent down, that those would survive a winter. So it looks like that they were put there with the intent, at least in my opinion, that the tent was, or some type of structure was going to stay there permanently. So it wasn't a one-to-one location change, the actual structure, the, the design of the structures appears to have changed as well. Condition 13, when this was originally approved, addressed the county noise ordinance. At that time, we had, our ordinance officer had believed that there was a county noise ordinance, and that's what it was called. The intent of that condition originally was to help kind of mitigate some of the complaints that were called by the neighbors about the use of the property. Shortly after that meeting, of course, there is no county noise ordinance, but there is another ordinance that does address disorderly conduct on county property. Talked with some of the sheriff's deputies, and they recommended and said, when they get called out, what they're enforcing is South Dakota Code of Fine Law 221835, which is on page nine of 15 of your staff report. And so staff has reworded the condition to address, and that the, it would be basically up to the deputies when they come out, because they're the ones that are getting called in the middle of the night, not us. I can't say the middle of the night, you know, I don't know what time of day, to address this, so it would be up to their interpretation and their consent, but we wouldn't put it in there that they should meet this. In addition to that, some of our PUDs and some of our vacation homes, not all of them, and other specialty resorts have quiet hours. There were no quiet hours originally dedicated on this planned unit development. Staff put them in there for discussion purposes, they can be removed as a condition. Originally had a discussion with the applicant where some specific times were mentioned, that they wouldn't be totally against having some time restriction, but that then did change during the course of our conversation to an unrestricted time, that there would be no restriction as far as time. So again, that's another discussion, aside from the tent, that needs to be had, is whether you want to do quiet hours. And I know the applicants are here, and I believe some of the complainants are here as well. So there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had. The other item is condition number 24, as far as parking on the roadways. There is a road district in, let's see if I can find a good picture here, there is a road district in place in this planned unit development, and there is parking, which occurs, this isn't the best, these aren't the best pictures in the world for it, but basically, it was a restriction that, to prohibit parking on the roadway. Now, from what we can, from what we have gathered, and there has been complaints about some parking on the roadway, and the photos that have come to us, is that the vehicles were not on the roadway. They were parked in the parking spaces, which were allowed on the lots, and dedicated on several lots with additional overflow parking across the street on separate lots. So that complaint that came in, the ordinance officer didn't find, was warranted, and the only way that the applicants even knew about it is, I met, when I met with them, I told them about that complaint that had come in. They're not looking to remove the oversight of the road district, they're not looking to remove that the road district prohibits parking on the roadways. Again, the complaints that came in about that parking, it was in designated parking spots on, on an existing lots where the parking spots were allowed. What was prohibited is people backing out of those spots onto the roadway. So the road district has oversight on the roadway, county has oversight in the PUD where those parking spaces are. There was, there was evidence of the, again, in that photo, of the cars that they appeared to be backing out on that, onto that roadway because of the way they were parked. So staff is looking to readdress that condition to state that the cars back into the parking spaces, so they're pulling out forward onto that roadway. In meeting with the applicants, they did say that their bartender does also act as the kind of parking enforcement while people are showing up, and if that maintains as a use, then that can be addressed as they, as they move forward, having someone up there helping them back in. So this was originally addressed years ago with a conditional use permit, to try and prohibit this altogether. So we're trying to work with the applicant, work with the newly-formed road district that's come over through the years, to be able to use that parking area, and still use those spots, but that they back into them, so they pull forward out onto the, onto the roadway. Also, the other change that staff is looking to do is for the statement of understanding, condition one, normally we give people 10 days. I don't know if you guys have noticed it, but we're looking to give them 20 days because there are so many owners of these lots, it is going to take the applicant additional time. So we're giving them a little bit of time, because they, they kind of live all over the place. Other than that, staff would be recommending approval of planned unit development 1603 with 43 conditions, with also our understanding is there still needs to be discussions about the tent, and I know the applicant has some concerns about the conditions that staff is proposing, and I know that there are some neighbors here that would like to speak as well.
All right, thank you, PJ. First question I have, what's the inherent major concern about the tent being permitted as a permanent structure?
The main issue for us is it sets a precedent for us, and also, the concern is from the fire coordinator for safety reasons. We called the company that permitted the tent, this Maximize a Tent System in Rainier. There are ways to have the tents with heaters in them, again, if it's done right, you can put air conditioning units in it, they don't, they don't propose to put a stove unit in it or anything like that. Again, it is flammable. Again, I wish the fire coordinator would be here, he was going to try and get here if he didn't have a call this morning. But in the discussions that he and I had on Friday, he is not in favor of permitting a tent permanently.
Okay.
But it can be used with heat sources inside if used properly, it can be done.
Okay, fair enough. Any questions for PJ?
I want to, I'm a little mixed up here that I want to say. So on, on page 10 of 15, on B, it says condition number 14, temporary tent. Then I look under conditions, and 14 has to do with quiet hours.
Correct, original condition number 14, it's referring back to the original 43.
Oh, okay, all right.
So if you look on page, where is it here? Page four or five, that's the last time it was approved on May 2.
Okay.
Yep.
I see, and so the change would be, or a change, is that to remove 14 from the prior approval, so that it doesn't show up in this?
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Knowing that there's going to be a discussion, because that was the major impetus, and staff has not looked, is not recommending that the tent be permitted permanently.
Right, okay. So I, and I appreciate what you said about your concerns about permitting it permanently, but, you know, if, if the facts on the ground, so to speak, are that there's these temporary tents that are permitted for a very long time, years and years and years, what's the real, functionally, what's the real difference between an ongoing temporary permit and if it were just permitted on a permanent, as a permanent structure? What's functionally the difference?
It's actually almost to your advantage to get a temporary permit, because you can change it every time you re-permit. A permanent permit just puts it there, there's no more reviews from staff. Anything they want to do inside as far as changing use, if they're like putting a bedroom, or a new kitchen, or something like that, they'd have to come back in and permit it. But other than the temporary, having to, we have to come up with a time, and then they pay the $60 temporary permit fee. Now, I know with the tents, the cost is a consideration for the applicants, because you have to take it down and put it back up every time.
And wear and tear.
I'm sorry?
And wear and tear.
And wear and tear.
I mean, so functionally, the concerns about fire, flammable, and so on, they're the same?
No matter what?
Yes.
Yes.
Either way.
Depending on the material you use, there are some people that are looking to actually do glamping, glamorous camping tents, and they put a direct flame onto the tent, and it doesn't even smoke. So it really depends on what you're using. Again, but I would leave that up to the fire coordinator to talk about the science of that.
But I mean, irrespective of the material, whether it is permitted as a temporary structure that gets, gets renewed on a annual basis, let's say, or if it's permitted as a permanent structure, if it's flammable in one case, that, that concern is in both cases. It's not, because it's not, I mean, the material, what it's made out of is just another issue entirely, or another separate issue. That has nothing to do with whether it's permanent or temporary.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I believe in either structure, again, just thinking about this right now, I put a sprinkler system up in either one. Haven't addressed that with Jerome as well, but that's, sprinkler systems or fire mitigation is becoming a major concern, along with water in the county too, are new things that are coming up.
And so that could be required, whether it be a temporary or a permanent?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been mentioned.
Uh-huh.
So it, it hasn't come to us yet, just thought about it now.
Yeah.
As a way to do it.
Right. All right, any further questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair. Lori?
The temporary permit for this tent right now, what's the term for it?
We haven't gone to a year yet. It was just issued a few months ago.
But is it, is it allowed for a year?
It's allowed up to twelve months.
Okay, so the, the existing permit allows them, it was in August of this year, correct? Is this what the notes say?
Yep. I don't have the permit with me, but it wasn't.
August eighth of two thousand seventeen. So right now, the temporary building permit allows them to keep the tent up for one year?
Yes, and it was based on the review. So the review was one, within one year of it being permitted, because I think there was some expectation it was going to be permitted right away, or February two thousand eighteen, whichever came first.
Okay. And then you talked about how there are other temporary, there are other tents in the county that are currently here because of a temporary building permit. What's the, what's the typical term for those, or can you give us a range of terms?
We have permitted temporary tents for, say, like FFA events for a weekend. And then we try, traditionally don't go over a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, so.
This was an exception. Again, and we don't have temporary defined in our ordinance. So anytime we set a time, we make sure the applicant is okay with it.
So, so you're saying then temporary building permits for tents in the county are anywhere from a weekend to a hundred and eighty days?
Correct, and this is an outlier.
This is a different one, okay. Thank you.
But, for example, how, like the tent that's out on Highway forty-four?
Yep, the one off near High Seega, that's the one I was talking about.
That's been up there for years.
Correct, and that's the one I was talking about.
That's certainly more than one hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, that was permitted back in eighty-five.
Right, as a temporary?
Yep.
Structure, and?
With the term of?
I can't remember when it was supposed to be taken down.
Do they come in, I mean, do they come in every year and renew it?
No. And this was brought up the last time this was reviewed, is there are other things out there like this. And so we're, we're using this kind of, the C where the planning commission and the board is on tents. And then that would change, that would dictate kind of our enforcement moving forward, because no one's called and complained about those. No one's had any issues with them. This is the first one.
Correct. Mark, did you have a question?
I did, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
At some point in time, I thought I heard you say that each time they renew their permit, they have to take the tent down, put it back up. Is that correct?
So the temporary permit would be temporary, so usually tents are taken down. And I believe that was stated from the applicants last time. It costs a lot of money to put a tent like this up and take it down. And Commissioner Lassiter had mentioned also wear and tear. So with a temporary tent, when that is up, it either reapply again, or it goes away.
Okay. But they don't, but when they reapply, if they get approved, they don't have to take the tent down and put it back up again, or they do?
No, if they apply early before it expires.
They can avoid that.
And we do that with building permits now, that if people can't meet the two-year build timeframe, as long as they come in before it expires, they can get another year extension. That's on a permanent building, that's on a stick-built structure.
Gotcha.
So as long as they do not come in after it's expired.
Okay. And then the other concern that I have, and I think probably the reason why I would say continue the temporary permit, is because tents don't have the lifespan of a wood structure, or adobe, or whatever you build your house out of. And they can be, the condition of the tent can come, become an eyesore if it's, you know. And so this gives us, the county, the opportunity to go out and view the tent, make sure that it's not got holes all over it, and pieces aren't flapping off of it, and that kind of stuff, so that we can repermit the, the use of the tent. Twelve months, I don't know if that's, you know, if somebody wants to go three years, I don't think that that would be a problem, but with this type of tent structure, obviously this was meant to be permanent. It's on a slab, but, you know.
Some way, shape, or form, yes.
Right, but I would, I would say that, that we, that temporary permitting is, would be the way to go with a tent, just for that fact that we can inspect the condition of it and make sure it's not an eyesore.
I'm still kind of in the mindset of letting it at least go for the full year. One, we did this back in August. Is that when we approved it, or May?
May.
May. So we approved it in May. We haven't seen it go through a winter. We haven't seen it deal with some of our harsh conditions here. I mean, to change the course of path that we're doing with it right now, I think we should have it reviewed around, when is the, when was the expected review for the tent?
February.
I mean, I think it should still, I don't know, maybe we push just the tent review back a little bit to get us through the winter, to see how it holds up through, through that aspect of it. But I think Mark's also got kind of on the right path on the aspect of it is a tent. It probably should at least be looked at every three years. Is that kind of what you're hitting at, at least every three years? Sturdiness and things of that nature. But that's just my input right now before we get going and hear from the applicants and any of the other concerns.
So, so just so I'm clear, you would, you're looking at making a recommendation. You didn't make a motion?
Have not made a motion.
Right.
My, my thought process is continue the tent on the path that we currently allowed it to go and still review the tent at the designated time, because I want to see it go through some of the, some of the weather that we have that's going to come up and see. Because if we say, yeah, it's a good idea to permit it for, you know, permanently, but then it blows away, I'm not saying it will, it's a pretty solid tent, it looks like, but you never know. Something happens to it, then we say, okay, why did it go like that? And we may not want to have something like that, that we're not looking at every hundred and eighty days or something like that. That's just my, my mindset on it. Plus, I wouldn't mind hearing what the fireman has to say about it as well. I mean, I used to work in a firehouse, and I know NFPA holds a lot of strength with the fire side of things. And if he's still not in line with keeping it up long-term, because, and it says it's NFPA rated, I want to know why. Because that's one of the things we look at, and if it says NFPA, we pretty much say, okay, NFPA says, good, let's go. But if he's got a concern with that, I want to know why. So if it's, if it's possible that he could?
He, he had asked them on the phone if it was rated as a permanent structure, and they did not answer that. He looked through their, he looked through their pamphlets and stuff online, and there's nothing in there that discusses it as a permanent structure.
And I would just wonder what they, if you're taking it down and putting it up, what that would do to the integrity of the material?
No, sure.
Because that would cause a, that could cause breaks in it to, to be more flammable, depending on what the material is, so.
Yep. And just one thing for Commissioner DeSano, you were asking about reviews, like if they went with a temporary building permit, we'd be looking at it. It also would get reviewed with the PUD when that would come up for review, which would be probably the next time, a two-year, a three-year extension.
Okay.
Good.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Sonny.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, I see there's concrete pad in here, but there's no plumbing or electrical in this?
I believe there is.
There is?
Yeah.
So how does that differentiate this tent with the temporary permit from, from other tents with temporary permits? Do they all have pads? Is that normal?
I haven't seen any. The permits that we have done temporarily have been in the middle of fields with, you know, grass for a barbecue or an event, something like that. So this is the first one that I know of with a concrete pad. And that one off High Seega might actually have one. We haven't had any reason to go up there and actually go in. We've investigated the history of it as asked by Commissioner Troutman when she was sitting on the board, and we reported back what we found.
I just see that as something of permanence, so it's semi-permanent in a way. What's with this little structure on the side? You said it's made of wood, but they had originally spoke of it being made from brick?
This right here?
Yeah.
Yep. So my understanding of it, and the applicants can correct me, I, I was in there once. So basically, this is kind of the bathrooms, and then over here is the kitchen. Originally, they were going to be two separate structures outside of the tent area, two independent structures. Then they had come in and asked if they could put the structures together into one, you know, kind of consolidate them, save some money, and put them up on the slab. Staff didn't have any issues with that, but they didn't, they don't appear to be made the way that they were originally going to be made.
PJ, with that, can you go back to the picture that shows the outside of the tent? So that right side of the tent that's dark, is that where the bathrooms and the kitchen is?
Yes.
Which you were just showing us?
Right here.
Right there? So it's not underneath, it's, it's underneath the top of the tent, but it's not, in itself is part of a wall structure for that far end of the tent? Is that how I see it?
Correct, and I believe that there is supporting structures here, but I don't know if it's been finished yet. I do believe that there are, like two, there are walls there, but without the actual drywall being finished. And right now, in the, in the kitchen is basically a dishwasher, like an industrial dishwasher, commercial dishwasher, some shelves, pots and pans, that kind of thing.
I hope I didn't cut on your toes or something. What you brought, brought to mind, I wanted to clarify something.
Well, that, that was my main thing, is that there is something of permanence to this, and it seems to be different from your average tent out in a field. So, you know, just, just considering that, it seems that if this was permitted as a permanent structure, it would still be different from your average tent site. And just because it's a tent, it may not mean that it's going to fall apart, so.
No, I agree.
Those are my thoughts.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, my question is, if it's a temporary building permit or temporary tent permit, I'm assuming it just stays off the tax rolls, is that right?
I'm not sure how equalization taxes it. Because of the difference in this one, they may assess it differently. I don't know.
Okay, so the assessor still goes out?
There are, there are rooms in there now. I don't know, it's going to be up to equalization to determine.
Yeah. Any, go ahead, Kathy.
I'm still, I just want to make sure I understand. So if we approve this as written with these forty-three conditions, we are essentially take, or am I mixed up on that? How many, how many conditions? Forty-three. We are, and we've removed the one that addresses the tent. And yet, I think that the, you know, at least what we've heard up here is that we, we're in agreement that the tent should be, you know, at a minimum permitted as a temporary structure and perhaps as a permanent structure at some point. Why, why would we remove that? Why would we remove that condition that was in the previous?
Because staff doesn't want it as a permanent structure. Planning commission may, staff does not.
Okay, so but even if, okay, well, let's say.
But you would just add the condition back?
Yeah. But, okay, let's say that if we just take, take off the provision, that it might be permanent, wouldn't we still need the first portion, the first sentence of that condition?
Where, are you going back to fourteen? The original fourteen?
Yes.
The applicant applied for a temp, you would. You would. Yep.
So that condition should be included. So the real question is whether the last sentence should be there or not.
Right, and when we originally recommended the approval of forty-three, it was with the understanding there'd be a discussion about the tent and possible addition of other conditions.
I see, okay, all right.
Because we don't know where you guys are going to lean on it.
Gotcha, okay.
And then also, this is a recommending body to the board, so the board would have the final decision.
And ultimately, we would have to add another condition in there if we wanted to address it specifically right now, today.
Correct.
One way or the other. Any further questions for staff? All right, would the applicant like to speak?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Daniel Evangelisto. This is my wife Nancy Evangelisto. I guess our point, the, the main reason we're having this meeting here today is because the initial review was supposed to be in February. Unfortunately, we're going to be out of town in February, so we just asked if we could move it up, because we're not going to be in town. So that was the, the previous two meetings that you guys had was just to approve having today's meeting. Like I said, unfortunately, we're not going to be in town in February. So, and then now with PJ doing the one-year review, brought up concerns on these three, primarily three, thirteen, fourteen, and item twenty-four. So I think kind of what we're looking at today.
One thing that we needed to clarify is on this tent, there's not just a permit for the tent. There are additional permit for the bathroom and the kitchen that are permanent building permits. We never anticipated doing this in brick. It's always been a sided wood frame structure, which is what you're kind of seeing. That is a bad picture. But on the end, where the kitchen and the bathrooms are, that is all a wood separately permitted structure that would stay regardless.
And it's under construction. PJ was right. It's, it's, I've been doing everything myself, so it just takes time, and I haven't, I'm still working on it. Probably this week, I'll be working on more of it, so.
Wow. And depending where we go with the rest of this is what's going to happen. Any other questions for us?
I have a couple of them, real quick. Would you be opposed to moving the review date back instead of forward? So basically moving it to May or April?
We're not going to be doing any more events this winter. We're going to be out of town almost all winter. For that, we couldn't see any changes, but your points on wanting to see the tent go through a winter season is understandable.
Also, how long you want to keep pushing it back? We've been dealing with this PUD for over three years, and it's been the never-ending project. I'm sure you guys would like it off your desk as well as we would like it off ours. But, so depending on how long you want to keep putting it off, we would like to get our business up and running and continually putting this off and off. I, I'm hesitating to take events at this point, because I never know. We've, we've had so many false complaints filed on us. I think the documents that you were referring to, Commissioner Johnson, shows a history of filing complaints that there's no validity to them. Noise complaints, lighting complaints, just nonstop. And that they went on the record, excuse me, showing that they don't like us, and they're going to call, and they're going to continue, no matter what we do, to file complaints. It's in black and white on the police reports. That's what they have stated.
When, when are you guys going to be back in town?
We're going to be in and out of town almost all winter. And I really would not like that to be discussed in this forum just because of the behavior of our neighbors, threatening with guns, decapitating animals, and throwing them on our property. Chainsaws to take fences down, our fences. It, it's not been a good situation, so.
And then my other question is, you've got those permitted structures, you said. How would that affect if the tent had to be taken down? What does that do to your permit on those? And do they, do they have roofs? I mean, the lid, it looks like the kitchen?
It's got a, it will have a flat top roof on it.
It'll have a flat top.
And, and, and PJ made it sound like it wouldn't weather a storm. It's, it's built just like a house. It's got two-by-six exterior walls. It's insulated like a house. It's plumbed and wired like a house. It's got siding like a house. It's, it's just like a sheet rock. I mean, it's just like a permanent structure as it's permitted, and that's how it's going to be built.
Okay. Kathy, did you have a couple of questions?
Yeah, I just, do you have any additional information about the fire retardant and the concern that was apparently expressed, that it?
That every piece of material on that tent has a certified stamp. It's flame retardant. You can put a flame directly to it, and it's not going to burn. So I really don't understand, like some of you had, I don't understand what the fire marshal has with it. I, this is my first, I've heard about it. I intend probably contacting him maybe this afternoon and sitting down and seeing what his concerns are, because I don't understand them myself, so.
Yeah, the fire rating, this particular tent is manufactured in Washington State. We actually went to the manufacturer before we decided on this product. It is one of the top-rated tent products out there. They build urets that are year-round homes for people. It, it's a really high-quality product. It, it's not anything like what you see on Highway forty-four. Ours will probably never get to that degree. It just, it's just the materials in today's standards versus those tents are night and day.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Just a comment, this tent material, I've looked at it quite a few times for a, from the same manufacturer, actually, as a hunting tent, and it's, I, I believe that it's actually more fire retardant than most houses.
Absolutely.
And as a, as a.
I mean, that's just my opinion, but.
And as a side note, as to the durability, you guys had some questions. The canvas is, is projected to stay fifteen years longer if you don't put it up and down. The frame is cast aluminum. It'll last longer than any wood frame building's ever going to last. I mean, so the durability of it's there.
I have a lot of experience with tents. I spent twenty-one years in the military. I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, these, these are way above, these are way above what, what we put up in the military.
NFPA's got a stamp on it, what's the fire, fire chief's concerned? That's why I asked the same thing. I, I agree. It looks like it meets all those safety standards. So that's the right reason why I wanted to know, if, if it's possible to know. why I wanted to know if it's possible to know ahead of time. Any further questions?
I'm just wondering, as far as moving out their permit date, what date works for you?
For review of the permanent-
Correct.
Of the tent? March? I don't know. Is that far enough through the winter season to make you feel comfortable of-
No, May.
I would feel a little more comfortable with May.
April, May.
If we could get it done this spring, it would be late, late winter, early spring would be great, so then we know which direction we're moving on with our venue site, so.
That would be my recommendation, at least, you know, get us through a bulk of the winter. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Lori. Go ahead, look.
Well, I mean, again, let's see, it says the building permit for this tent was approved on August, what about next August? That's a year.
Because we would like to move forward with business and events and, you know, we put a lot of money into marketing and advertising, if we're gonna have to, if we start our marketing now for next winter, next season.
So you said you have-
I'm now being shut down as far as my marketing to get my businesses up and running, that's the concern.
Because you said you have no events this winter, right?
Due to personal reasons, we're not gonna be available.
Okay, so, so what would be a, what would you think a convenient date would be?
For final approval of it, you mean?
Past a year. Past a year. Let's assume, I mean, let's assume we're gonna let you run it for a year, it hasn't even been up a year. I mean, would it make more sense, August of 2019?
Yeah, the only reason we would like it sooner is there's things like interior drapes and lighting and-
So you wanna go farther out than what we're doing now?
Well, yeah, why not? I mean, you're saying this tent could last fifteen years, why not move it out a couple of-
The amount of money we're putting into the project.
Okay.
It's like, you know, we're now at a standstill. I'm not gonna spend another fifteen, twenty thousand on finishing the look of the inside of the building.
That's what I was trying to understand, what's your business, yeah, okay.
And the chairs and the, you know, all of the additional things that go into this have all been put on hold because of it.
Okay, I understand.
I'm not gonna keep dropping money into a well and not have it produce.
Okay, and then I have a second question. The thing about quiet hours, right now, do you seriously like stop a wedding reception at ten PM?
Absolutely. Every vendor in the industry that does DJing knows that if they're on our property, I don't care if they're in the middle of the song, it's done. And that's not really good for my business when, right across the street, Black Forest Inn, all of the other venues don't have that restriction put on them. I personally like to go to bed fairly early, so I don't have a problem with it. Where it comes into an issue is, it's not just for this venue, it's for the entire PUD that you're putting this noise ordinance on. So, we stop the music at ten o'clock, even back at the tent. People going from their cars, or from the tent to their cars, it sometimes takes them, you know, half hour, an hour. We have people coming into the B&amp;B who have been at Rushmore Lighting Ceremony, they're coming back at eleven o'clock at night. Do they slam doors? Probably, you know, they try and be quiet, but I can't, you know, you have to realize we're in an area that it echoes. They giggle. I can hear people in the neighborhood having conversations on their deck because of the echo factor in there.
But, just so I understand, the conditions of this PUD apply to all the properties that it applies to?
Absolutely.
If I decide to purchase a lot here and put a house up and wanna set out on my deck at twelve, at midnight-
You will not be allowed to do that if you-
Depends what the definition of quiet hour is.
Well, again, a quiet hour-
Does quiet hour mean the music is shut off and you can get in your car and leave after that and that's okay, then we don't have issues with that.
And that's why I stated that that first condition, that PJ put in, codify law SBCL twenty-two dash eighteen dash thirty-five, it addresses making unreasonable noise.
Okay.
So to put additional restraints on all of this PUD, I didn't feel was necessary.
Okay, so that was my point. My point was, I don't think we need condition fourteen. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions, Sunny?
My quick question is on the durability of the tent, does the manufacturer state anything about warranty or longevity expectations?
Well, so I stated earlier, that it's projected to be fifteen years on canvas and longer if you're not taking it up and down annually, and the frame is, like I say, it's cast aluminum, so it's gonna last forever, so.
Been a moment, fifteen years is expected?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions for the Evangelistos? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One other issue that I wanted to point out is the fact that there has been a lot of conversation about the other venue that has tents up. You know, if we're setting a precedent, then does that mean you go back and you look at these other issues, these other venues that are having tents put up year-round, whether it be in part or whole? I know one venue, they take their canvases down, but they leave their tent structure up year-round. How do we fall into that? And what's the positioning on that?
That's a good question. I think some of it's gonna do with how this all unfolds too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the audience like to speak on this item? If you would, just come on up, state your name.
My name is Emily Swanson, I'm a lawyer at Banks McCullin. I'm kinda out of my league here, so I'll just tell you that right now, if you have a bunch of substantive questions, I'm not gonna be able to answer them. We, Banks McCullin represents a bunch of these neighbors and a bunch of the complainants. The two lawyers who have this file, we got notice, I think you guys issued notice that this was coming up last Wednesday, our office got it on Friday, and both those lawyers are busy today, which is how you ended up with me. But I can tell you that the neighbors would agree with you guys' sounds-like recommendation to put this review out, just because of the fact that this notice wasn't very long, and I know you guys have some emails from some of our clients stating some of the concerns about the tents and the noise complaints and the lights and all kinds of stuff. One thing that I wanted to make you guys aware of is, one of the big issues that our clients have with this is a water issue. I understand that's not really you guys' jurisdiction or really your concern, but just so you know, there were three, at least two, if not three, times this summer that the neighbors didn't have water, because there's all kinds of ongoing issues with this well and whether it's domestic use or whether it's commercial use. The, specifically, the Board of Water Management has written a letter to the Evangelistos saying that well lot P is for domestic use only, so there's some ongoing issues there. I'm not really asking you guys to make any big decision on that, I just want you to be aware that there are some pretty major water issues going on with this business and what it's doing to its neighbors. But, all in all, we would support the recommendation to review, put this review out, so that way those concerned neighbors can be here in person, can tell you what their concerns are, and those water issues can be addressed.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can you tell us what neighbors you represent?
Yep, Dale and Peggy Gibson, Peggy Bowser and Dawn Behrens, Janelle and Robbie Clausen, and that's who I think you guys got an email from that PJ provided you last night, and Barbara Madison.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Just a moment. Any other audience members like to speak on behalf of this item?
Hi, my name's William Newcomb, and I live on the east side of Summer Creek Inn. And basically, you know, you guys have got a lot of information from everybody that lives in the area from PJ, but the one thing I wanna bring up is, these people aren't really truthful. They aren't, the lies that come out of them, it's, almost every time they open their mouth, there's a falsity that comes out. One of them, for an example, talking about the water issue, they stated that they are not hooked up to the well on lot P, when in reality, they are hooked up and they've even admitted it on phone conversations. That was brought up with the DNR in a meeting with them, but they're just not truthful in what they say. You know, if they would do things the proper way and get the proper permits, rather than going through the construction and then wanting a permit to do the construction, I mean, they're putting the carriage before the horse on just about everything they do. Their little campground that they had, you know, that wasn't approved, but they went ahead and used it anyway, and they knew they were gonna get fined for it, but the money they made off of it was, made it worthwhile to go ahead and pay the fine and do what they want with it. You know, as far as this tent goes, you know, if you had to live by it and look at it on a daily basis, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days out of the year, you'd probably think twice, you really would. People out there, they purchased their property and they lived out there because that's where they wanted to live, out and then near the national forest and have the view and the wildlife and all that. It just doesn't happen. These people wanna convert that whole area into a city, and, you know, that's not what we purchase the property out there, that's not the views that we want. You need to put yourself in our position. Items that they bring up, chainsawing a fence, yeah, we did, we took one post down, reason being the fence was on our property, and we had to go to court over the whole thing. And in turn, they moved the fence. You know, we lost a lot of property because of that. Our lot is small, but, you know, they take what they, they take what they can, and they really don't care about the people out there. The only thing that they do care about is issues that we bring up, but it just never ends. It never does. And I hope you really consider, think about it, think about how would you like to live out there and see the construction going on over and over and over, it just keeps getting more and more. Why does we live in the city? Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm, I appreciate what you're saying, but I also, looking at the police reports, see that there are complaints that are made, they're unfounded. The lighting complaint, several times, people have called in about the lighting, the police have gone out there to look, and the lighting is not on, and-
I agree with you on that, I do, and we've made a lot of those complaints because we live right next door to it.
Okay.
I've seen those lights on at two o'clock in the morning. They say that the lights are on timer. If the lights are on and timer, why are they on at two o'clock in the morning? For months and months and months, they ran the lights to ten-thirty. Their PUD says they need to be shut off at ten o'clock, and they said, no, the PUD says ten-thirty, and they ran it for ten-thirty. And we complained about a lot, and now they're turning the lights off at ten o'clock, because, I guess they read it and saw that that was a condition that they had put in there. But, the lights are not on a timer. If they were on a timer, they would be off at ten o'clock all the time, and they're not. And I agree, we've called, and they send somebody out, and just after we call, the lights go out. There's nothing we can do about that, that's just the way it happens.
I have a question, do you have it in writing that it's, their lights are supposed to be off at ten-thirty?
Lights are supposed to be off at ten.
Okay, do you have it in writing that they're supposed to be off at ten?
Yes, I don't have it with me, but yes.
Okay. I only ask because I asked PJ about it earlier to see if there was something in writing, and as far as I'm aware of, PJ, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that is not a condition of the original PUD, is that correct?
I'm looking for it, I don't see it.
I don't see if that's why.
Okay. And I asked that question solely because maybe they're turning them off at ten now because they're tired of being complained about, about something that's not there, but they're trying to show that they're being good neighbors. I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying, whenever that was brought to my attention, I was asking, okay, where's it written? Because I like black and white, black and white tells me I can then go say, okay, you guys are violating it, so let's talk about that. If it's not written there and you're complaining about it, that's what we wanna know, if it's, are they truly violating it? So just wanted to see if you had it there, and if PJ finds it, he'll let us know. Any further questions?
For that, can I add to his thing with the light? Terry Vaughn and I live down the road. From what I understand, the light issue at the ten o'clock was in the original conditional use permit, that's where the ten o'clock was. The PUD hasn't been officially approved yet, correct?
Oh, it has been.
It has been.
Couple of years ago.
So then it got taken out? That might be where the confusion is, because the original conditional use had a ten o'clock timeframe, right?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so I think there's just some confusion, I don't think it's-
The original one may have had it, but then when it was finally approved and moved forward, it was not in the final one.
It may possibly have been taken out, and so I don't think they're trying to be deceptive of the timeframe, because it did say ten in the past, and it might have gotten changed with the PUD, so, that, or there might be some confusion on that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
And now, at this point in time, if there is no condition at what time the lights should be turned out, it sounds like they are cooperating, or at least trying to cooperate with shutting them off at a reasonable hour so that they're not interfering with you guys, with your peace.
So perhaps, maybe the question should be, can they add a condition to have a timeframe put back in there then, since it was taken out from the original? And that's where some of that stuff has happened, like the thing about the campground, it was in the original conditional use, no, you can't have a campground, and then they added the campground back into the PUD. So things changed as it came along, and I think a lot of the problems stem from original with the conditional use, and then it got taken out, and I think the neighbors would like to have it kinda put back in, because it got pulled out.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much, William.
Thank you.
Any further audience members like to speak on behalf of this item?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Can you come forward and state your name, please?
Barbara Madison. Okay, I wanna ask you directly, who has threatened you with a gun?
I think, ma'am, ma'am-
I wanna know who has thrown her with the gun.
If you would like to address the issues here with us, you could address the issues with us.
All right, fine, I wanna know who has issued a warning out to her with a gun.
As far as I'm aware, there's not been one. PJ, are you aware of one? We didn't have any police reports of that.
Okay, how come she mentioned that, then?
You know, ma'am, a lot of people mention a lot of things that they feel has happened, and it's non-substantiated.
Well, it is to me, because that's accusing somebody of doing something that they didn't do.
Okay, so, do you have anything else specific on this item?
No, I don't, I just wanted to know who threatened her.
Thank you. Any further audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, I believe, Dan, you had raised your hand to address something.
Yeah, my name is Dan Evangelisto, my wife Nancy Evangelisto, I'll try to make this quick just to get you guys out of here. In regards to the water issue, they're talking about lot P, that is a well for the community water use of that whole subdivision. Our B&amp;B nor the event site is using water off of that well, and we did go through proper channels with the state to get it, the well that we are using, which, Mr. Newcomb, we have a shared well agreement, and that's one reason he's so upset, because they purchased their property and closed on it without reading his closing documents, obviously, and didn't realize that it was a shared well, they knew that, but of the payment and the shared cost of repairs is what he's upset about, I believe, but that water for the event site and the B&amp;B comes off of that well, and it's already been, the state has already certified as being able to use it for commercial purposes, so.
So just to clarify- So just to clarify, there's.
Which lot is that?
There's two wells.
Or Lot 5, the one in the upper right-hand corner.
It has an X on it, right?
Yeah, over on the, yeah.
Right next to 4.
Okay, right next to 4, that's where.
That's where Mr. Newcombe lives.
And your well, and y'all's shared well is?
It's a shared well, we're in charge of the utility payments, it's up to our, hooked up to our power and everything. Side note, Newcomes haven't paid any of the expenses for the well to be, or to use the water for over two years.
And where's Lot P?
Lot P is across the.
Above, above where it says Taylor Ranch Road, it's across Taylor Ranch Road, is Lot P.
Okay, and Lot P services all the rest of the PUD and the neighbors in the area?
It will, there's a designed, approved, state-certified well, water system that we went to pier and got approved, and that will be going in eventually to service as water, as lots are sold and need for water, that will all be put in place.
So just for clarification, for me, and I don't know if anybody else needs this clarification, but some people complain that they were, had no water for a couple of days. Is that within the PUD?
Yeah, that we did a water main extension this summer. We had to get water from the B&amp;B up to the new event site, so in doing so, I did a water main extension for the community water system as well, it was about 350 foot long.
Because of the trench.
The only ones that were without water that were living there at the time would have been Clausen's, and we contacted them, let them know, and I think they were without water for possibly, part-time for two days. We stayed in contact with them, and we had them water every night when they came home. So that was the only thing I can think of that they're talking about, that they were without, without water.
Newcomes may have been, at one time over the summer, been without water because there was an issue with the well and a part had to be replaced. It was an emergency, you have to fix a well, and so Alexander Drilling came out and fixed the well.
But it wasn't because we were running out of water like they're implying.
Any further questions?
I got a couple more, I mean, he just rambled off a whole bunch of things, and I just, the permits, we've applied for every permit that we needed to, as far as the fence issue, I'm not even going to go into that.
The one issue that was not addressed originally when we first started talking was the parking on Summer Creek Drive Road.
Number 24, we didn't really touch base on that.
Item 24, we forgot to address that. There are, I think, what, how many spots?
Maybe 10 spots out of our 40 or 50 parking spaces, and I guess from the initial approval, we never could understand what was wrong with pulling into a parking spot and backing out onto Summer Creek Drive. I mean, it's minimal traffic. Downtown Rapid City has hundreds of parking spaces that back out onto St. Joseph, Main Street, Kansas Street.
And one of ours.
And that was okay, but backing 10 spaces out onto Summer Creek Drive, I don't know why they're putting this restriction that we have to back in. And having gone through a season having events up there, we're using those 10 spaces for elderly and handicap parking spaces, because they're closer to the event site and the tent without having to do steps. And it works out better if they can nose-pull in so they can exit their vehicles easier.
Take wheelchairs and whatnot out of the back end of their vehicles.
It's not a make or break deal for us, it's just, we couldn't understand why they were putting this restriction on backing out onto Summer Creek Drive. It's not like there's high-speed traffic on it or anything, so.
So we are requesting that condition be revised, so it allows those specific spots, not any of the others, we're fine with all of that. It's those are intended for elderly, disabled, and caterers to unload their vehicles to bring in food.
Anything else?
Any other questions regarding water?
Any questions for the Evangelistos? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. PJ, quick question for you. Parking spots that they were talking about?
We can change them to designated loading/unloading only, if that's what they're used for.
I don't think they're, I don't think you want them designated loading/unloading, it's more for your elderly, your handicap, and things of that nature, is that what I understand? And it's how many parking spots?
10.
Those 10 parking spots? Do you know which ones they're talking about?
I do, I don't know if they're ADA accessible, they're not marked as handicap last time I was there, but I can definitely see the use because they are closest to the tent. But we, if they were, so.
If I could just step back a step, so the original suggestion that these were just the back-end vehicles only, because, you know, that's really just an interior, you know, interior kind of road without much traffic, so what was the original basis for that?
So the original basis came up with the old, this is where the parking spaces are, pretty much, right? 12, the little red lines?
Yes.
Came up with the original conditional use permit through the old director, and he didn't want anybody backing up, he actually wanted a barrier put up along the roadway so that it couldn't be done. That wasn't followed through with, and the original condition in this PUD is that it's prohibited. It was still done, and it says the condition, it's prohibited. So we're trying to work with the applicant so that they can get use out of those parking spaces, but still make it safe, because at some point, that road, if they do sell off these properties, there may be additional residents there, there might, I mean, you're not going to get downtown traffic on this road like you do in Rapid City, but we're looking at it from a safety standpoint.
Question, though, does that apply to all lots or just that one particular lot?
Just to those.
Just that one.
Just that particular one?
Yep.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Laurie.
But there are no, for example, if someone decides to build a house on one of those lots off of Summer Creek Drive, and they want to back down their driveway into the road, they aren't going to have this restriction.
That's not the intent, no.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
On the water issue, how many lots out here are not developed yet?
Oh geez, most of them, most of them. Let's see, I need some help from the residents here. So I know there's a house here, here.
Out of 45 building lots, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 homes built currently.
So 13 that, or 17?
And out of those 13, only 11 of them currently would be able to use the community water system. Two of them in existence have their own private wells, so take those off the table.
Okay.
And the community water system that we had engineered and designed will provide water for approximately 35 residences with storage capacity of 25,000 gallons.
So in comparison to what you're using with your events?
There again, it's two separate wells. The community water system is, community water system, the water that we're using for the bed and breakfast and the event site is a totally separate, private, private well. Doesn't have anything to do with what they're saying is Lot P that we're hooked into.
All right, any further questions? All right, Dan, thank you very much. Anything further from the audience? All right.
Commissioner, just one, since it was addressed about the late notice of the review, PUD reviews aren't advertised. Well, they are advertised, but their letters are not sent out normally, because the applicants had requested to have this review moved up from February, and we brought it before the planning commission a few weeks ago, I actually think it was last month, brought it before the board, so that the request could be moved up from February because the condition stated as February. And as a concession, we made a, we'd made a condition that if it does get moved up, the first-class mailings are done, and the applicant agreed to that. So as soon as the board approved it, those letters went out. Normally, we wouldn't do it, but we did it in this case, I requested it.
Okay. All right, so currently, we have a recommendation to approve the extension of the PUD 1603 with the following 43 conditions. We talked about 13, 14, and 24 mostly, and then, of course, we discussed about the tent, which is not in any of these current conditions. So any questions, any thoughts, any motions to be proposed? Laurie, you mentioned about the, you were talking about the time, I don't know if I'm set on that timeframe either. I mean, even if you shut the business down at 2,000 hours and you give them an operating time, if they shut down at 2,000 hours to stop even music, you still got half an hour that you may have guests there trying to get out and be quiet, and, or 20, what did I say, 2,000, 2,200 hours?
2,200.
So, that's 10:00 PM, yes, I'm sorry, military time. That's what you were trying to get at, you're like, you're talking English to people, not English to people. 10:00 in the evening, I'm sorry. Were you looking at something else with that mindset?
Well, I mean, my recommendation would be to remove condition 14, because if I lived in, I like to stay up late at night, and if I can be quiet enough in my house, I wouldn't want that restriction. I think that the proposed wording of condition 13 is adequate.
Yep, I agree with 13.
And I also agree that proposed condition 15 addresses the lighting issue. Again, if I want lights on at my house, I wouldn't want people telling me I need to turn them off at 10:00. Maybe I want to keep them on until 2:00. Maybe my kids are coming home at 3:00. Maybe I have an overnight guest, it's going to show up. I wouldn't want to live there.
Agreed.
With those restrictions.
And I, regarding 24, I just didn't quite, it seems like the case wasn't made to be so restrictive on those parking spaces.
I agree too, I mean, it'd be different if they were backing out onto, you know, Hot 385 or something like that, or even the other road that serves, what's that other road that goes past there?
Taylor Ranch?
Taylor Ranch.
Yeah, Taylor Ranch Road, but.
That's another matter, but this one, I don't think the case has been made for that restriction.
And then what about the tent?
Can I say something?
Sure. Come forward, state your name.
My name's William Newcombe, and in regards to the, to the lights, their whole facility is lined with lights, roof, everything. It's not just a couple of lights outside, it's the whole building, okay? I just, just want you people to know that it's not just one or two lights in a parking area or something like that, it's, it's the whole building, bed and breakfast.
But, Mr. Chair, myself, as a homeowner, if I wanted to, I can put low-intensity lighting to frame my building, I can put them along my walkway, and I, you know, if I want to, I can do that. I can keep my Christmas lights up all year round if I want to. Maybe I like the way that looks.
Fine.
I mean, these.
They're not low-intensity lights, it lights up.
But, but from what I understood from the walkways, they do have the low-intensity lights on the walkways, it's not like they have spotlights everywhere, right?
I'm not concerned about the walkways, can't even see the walkways, it's all within a fenced area. I'm talking about the building, the roofs lined with lights, the building is, is, go out there in the evening and take a look for yourself.
And they keep them on through the entire night, is that what you're trying to tell me?
I, they've had them on as long as 2:00 in the morning. It's not a regular basis, it doesn't happen all the time, but anywhere from 11:00 to 2:00, I've seen them on.
And they're high-intensity lights on the building, they're not low-density lighting.
I don't, I don't know, I'm not an electrician, I don't know the difference between a high-intensity light and a low-intensity light. But the whole place is lined with lights, and like I say, take a ride out there some evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Evangelisto, I would encourage you guys, if you would, please come out and take a look at them, they are a low intensity. There maybe was one or two occasions in six years that we've had them on, maybe to 2:00, and that's because we had some guests flying in from out of state, and they were arriving on like 2:00, maybe like 12:00 or 12:30, flying in from out of state, trying to find our location, and we left them on just so they could find it. Typically, they're on 10:00, 10:30, we shut them off. We got electric bills we have to pay too, so we don't want to light the whole world up any.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Do you have any of your lights on timers?
No.
No timers, so you turn them on and off as you, no timers, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, regarding the tent, I, we could perhaps change the date, I'm looking at the condition 14 of the original PUD, I, but I don't think I'm prepared today to decide that we shouldn't allow for a permanent permitting of the tent at some point in the future. And so I think this needs to go back into, this condition needs to go back into what we're approving today, and, and if we, if there's some sense that the date of which we revisit this needs to be changed from the 14, 2018, that's certainly reasonable. But I think, my, my perspective is that this needs to come back into what we're approving today.
I agree, I think we, Michelle, do you have an input on that?
I wanted to make a comment with regard to Commissioner Litsen's concerns on, with regard to items 13 and 14 concerning sound and lighting. I just wanted to point out that not only is public nuisance part of our South Dakota codified laws, but it's also incorporated in pending accounting ordinance, and that if, if lighting and/or noise, and reasonably impacts a community, there also could be criminal charges and/or civil action with regard to public nuisance, so, and that's whether it's this planned unit development or any other community. If someone is blaring music at 2:00 in the morning on a regular basis, there could be a complaint for public, for, for public nuisance, so I don't, didn't know if that might address your concerns with regards to the lighting and the sound.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Michelle, if you don't mind, could you define unreasonable?
Well, that's the problem with the law, but there are several cases dealing with noise. One, it's basically, you know, taking the average person, and would you consider it unreasonable if there's a nightclub in your neighborhood, it's not adequately soundproofed, and at 2:00 in the morning, your windows are vibrating? So, yeah, there always going, will be gray areas, but in the law, you generally take your average person and look at the facts and circumstances. And the second prong to a public nuisance is that it's not a matter of whether it's going to upset just one neighbor within the community, but does it impact, not necessarily the entire community, but several individuals within a community, so it could be a hog farm, it could be a nightclub, there's, there have been mining operations that have been found to be public nuisances because of noise complaints, so.
Chickens.
Yeah, chickens, so I just wanted to point out that with or without condition 13 or 14, there are other ordinances and laws that address those issues.
Do you, in your opinion, do you think that people leaving and closing their car doors and driving down the road is, would be considered a noise nuisance?
I think every, every situation is different. I, you know, I hear my own neighbors slamming a door, but if it was 365 days a year, and at 2:00 every morning, and waking me up, it just, it's hard to answer that question, you really would have, in the law, you really have to look at each individual case.
Got you, okay, thank you.
All right, any further input? Rich, you look like you have a question or statement?
No, just a comment, I guess, regarding the tent. Tents by their definition in my mind are temporary, but in this instance, we have a tent that can really stay up somewhat permanently, and apparently close to 15 years. I'm thinking right now of what I would consider a permanent structure, probably by a lot of the counties that they've used with, they put up concrete walls and then they got fabric roofs. Well, it's just a tent with concrete walls, right? So I guess there's, I don't know if I'm adding to the conversation, but it just seems like it's by definition, so I'm in favor of extending the temporary building permit and understanding how it reacts. I think that the initial thought there of reviewing that for a year, and if we want to move that up to March, I'm fine with that too, but I do think we need to understand how it performs. And then beyond that, if it was ever going to go to some sort of permanent status, I would want to make sure that it is erected and has anchoring, et cetera, that would make it be a permanent status. There's just a lot of details there about a building that we don't, we don't currently have, or I don't have in front of me to make that, and so I'll be in favor of adding the temporary building permit extension back into the list here and reviewing that at a later date. And if there's details that come up that prove otherwise, then those will be considered at that time.
And I'll let you know, there's a reason why, there's been two tents that are industrialized tents that I've seen blow.
And, and I'll let you know, there, there's a reason why. There's been two tents that are industrialized tents that I've seen blow last year. The one off of, uh, I ninety, that one concrete structure, it's concrete and had the top on it, part of that's, that top blew off. And then out in New Underwood, we had another, um, large structure tent blow over for the feed meal that was out there. So, that's the reason why I kinda wanna see how it handles through there. But, I think you gotta, I think we're on the same line there, so.
And tho, and those were both, um, the types that have like the, um, masonry or concrete foundation with a tent over the top?
One was, it's a, it was a concrete-
Like the sand?
Structure. Yeah, the sand piles out there, yeah.
Okay, so one of those blew?
Side wall structure. And the one out in New Underwood, I don't believe it had a, uh, concrete foundation, but it was one used to protect hay out there. It was a industrials, industrial tent that was out there, and it just got totally demolished.
May I just make a quick, Nancy Evangelisto, um, the one tent that you're talking about, um, that blew, um, I know kind of the history of some of that, and it was not properly anchored.
That is very possible, but again, that's one of the reasons why-
And the New Under one, there's been question whether that one was as well. PJ was out and he can attest to the level of anchoring that we have put on this, just side note. Thank you.
But just as a, another note, that's why many of us leave the prairies and move into the Black Hills, because we get tired of those winds.
Get tired of the winds. So, I'm with the mindset of adding forty-third, so taking forty-three and making it forty-four. And making forty-three, basically, you say everything that item fourteen originally said, that applicants apply for the temporary building permit to the event tent, but we change it into the May, whatever May meeting that we have. If anyone else doesn't have any concerns with that one, so.
First to the second May meeting, do you have a preference?
Um, second May meeting. You got that, Brittany?
Any other in, input on this before someone makes a motion, just to make sure we're kinda covered and figure out where we're standing?
I was just wondering how that May date was decided on instead of, say, March, or?
Well, May twenty-eighth would be the fourth, that would be the fourth, but that's Memorial Day, so our meeting gets moved to?
I don't have that calendar yet.
Tuesday? Does it, when it's on a holiday?
Usually, if it gets bumped.
So, it'd be on the twenty-ninth of May?
May is, May is, you know, pretty well beyond the winter extremes. And the, the applicants were interested in getting some decisions made on, you know, what kind of progress you're gonna make on that building, so.
And so that's beyond your deadline?
Well, we really would prefer, you know, March, by March, we've gone through the winter.
Maybe March twenty-sixth.
That'd be great.
You're the one that was talking about May when we were talking, to me.
Well, no, but, and again, I'd forgotten that, um, Ms. Evangelisto, sorry, Nancy, you know, suggested that earlier would be better than later for them.
Okay, I'm good with this, March.
March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth.
Me too.
Can we just do, can we just mention, uh, March two thousand, second meeting in March two thousand eighteen, just in case the day's wrong?
Just in case the day's wrong, that's fine.
So, is there a motion? We've got, we've talked about removing some, and we've added one. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, that's why I wanna do some clarification, what we're doing with, um, I think fourteen's coming out.
We haven't had a motion yet, that's why I was kinda getting ready to, to determine.
Yeah, if you're taking two out, then the number forty-four you proposed wouldn't be forty-four, so, okay.
That's why I was like, well, you, find out what the motion ends up being. But if it goes as proposed, and then we just add that one, then it would be, so.
I will move approval of, um, the PUD review of sixteen dash zero three with the conditions as recommended with the following revisions. That number fourteen is, is removed, number twenty-four is removed, and that a condition is added that reflects condition fourteen of the prior, um, PUD sixteen zero three conditions. But changing the date for review from February of eighteen to March of, um, two thousand eighteen.
Second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March, yes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
What was that, thirteen or fourteen did you say? Or both?
Well, it was fourteen from the old, i- is that what you're meaning for fourteen?
Oh, when you said?
The, the new, that they had added condition?
You said, you said thirteen, was that from the original?
Oh, did I say thirteen, I meant fourteen?
No, she said fourteen.
She said fourteen. There was, that's the confusion, is you wanna remove fourteen from this one and add one that's similar to the old fourteen, which was the temporary, yeah. That's what's confusing.
Oh, I see.
There's two different fourteens.
That's not the noise, okay.
Are you good, Sonny?
Yeah, I'm, I'm following, um.
I know there was two fourteens, I went like, yeah.
That's the confusion.
So, that was addressing the temporary, um, building permit? Did you include the, the, uh, the noise intensity issues that are now thirteen and fourteen on the newest?
So she removed fourteen and left thirteen.
A new fourteen.
A new fourteen.
Okay.
Yes, left thirteen.
But left thirteen, okay.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number eighteen.
Hello, Frank Waiseth, Planner Two. So this item is for a proposed road name as stated in the memo. Um, this road would serve five, potentially six lots. Um, one currently in the process of obtaining a building permit. One lot already has a access. So this is the area we're looking at here. The new road is approximately right through that thin path, you can see, has been improved. Takes, it's kinda takes access right off of this driveway, meaning that this address point would need to change if the road was renamed. The applicant's request was for a Cascade Ridge Road with an alternative of Reflection Ridge. The alternative has been endorsed by nine-one-one and County GIS, or City GIS. Just to avoid, um, any potential conflict with similar road names in the surrounding counties.
Is that it?
Uh, yep, that is it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna tell me some more.
No, just, hey.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor again. I'll go over just some history. Um, there was a request to improve a section line that runs north and south here to the Board of Commissioners about a year ago, um, in two thousand and sixteen. And that road was actually mainly constructed outside of that section line right of way. And it was heard in front of the board at their last meeting and continued. One of the conditions that I did put in that, um, request, or that review, was that they come back in front of you guys to do a construction permit because the road was primarily constructed on private property instead of the section line right of way. However, it does not, um, stop the fact that they do need to have this road named, whether it be inside private or public rights of way at this time, or an easement, um, because it does access, um, these six lots to the north. And in order for them to get a building permit on Lot twenty-eight, which is that, oh, let's see, this lot right here. Oops, that lot right there. Um, they do need to have some way to address that, and at this point, um, we don't have any way to address it. There's only one number off of Wilderness Canyon to address at this point. Uh, and in addition, where it comes into that lot off of where the road is constructed, it doesn't come into where that platted area is or the section line, it comes up through an easement, so. They have put in a request to name that section of road that they had constructed. Um, that road is about a thirty-foot wide road, um, that runs north, that they had planned to eventually provide access to all those lots.
Just, why didn't they follow the current proposal of a road, or is there a reason why?
Um, I believe this follows a very steep canyon, and it was deemed it would be prohibitively expensive to improve that entire road as platted there originally, so this was a much more feasible option to build this road.
There were obstructions, PJ, or, sorry.
That's okay.
There were obstructions.
Fair, no, fair enough, I'm just like, hmm, okay.
Rock obstructions from what I heard at the last meeting.
Okay. Um, so, um, you can just go.
Sorry, Travis.
No, that's fine. I, I don't mind, oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Rich.
Do, are the applicants okay with Reflection Ridge Road?
Uh, yes. Since that was their alternative, yeah. But, um, nine-one-one did not approve of Cascade Road as there is a Cascade Court, I believe, near Piedmont, which is in the dispatch area for nine-one-one, so they wanted to avoid a similar sounding name.
Gotcha. So there's a proposed name for this, or?
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mark.
Is there a Cascade Ridge Road?
Um, no, not that I'm aware of.
Just Cascade Road?
Cascade, yeah, but they want to avoid any, adding similar sounding names.
Well, if the applicant's okay with it, I don't have a problem with the second alternative.
So you want a motion to that effect?
Uh, yeah, we are comfortable with the name Reflection Ridge Road.
Cascade Ridge Road is what you're, or just Ridge Road?
No, I'm, uh, I would concur with nine-one-one's recommendation to, uh, for Reflection Ridge.
Oh, Reflection Ridge?
So you want a motion for approval of Reflection Ridge Road?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number nineteen. Commissioner?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there's a gentleman in the audience that was going to request, um, that item ten from the consent count to be reconsidered by the prevailing party to be reheard.
So we already passed it on the consent agenda, but he would like it to be readdressed.
So, my understanding is the prevailing party can ask at the same meeting to have it reheard.
Okay, so we would need a motion to-
Which was everybody.
To pull it off the consent, or to pull it off the-
Reconsider.
Reconsider? All right, so is there a motion?
I'll move item number ten be reconsidered.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I guess we bring item ten.
So item ten is conditional use permit seventeen thirty-nine to allow for an office building on the subject property. The applicant is Colonial Pine Sanitary District, Jim Martin, and it's approximately five point five acres. Uh, this structure basically would look like a house, but would function as an administrative office. There is a facility directly to the north of this property, um, so it looks like they're just kinda looking to consolidate some things together. Staff recommended that it be continued, um, because of some issues on the plat itself, on page four or five of the staff report. As you can see, um, there is designated drain fields that are on the plat. This is a city plat. And city, if there's any changes that are required to the plat, city always wants to do those changes. Um, it's also noted on the plat that a secondary, um, drain field has to be noted. The applicant's, uh, plan is to put the driveway over, um, one of the drain fields. So, there would have to be, per the plat, a secondary drain field be reestablished. We have talked with, uh, staff from the planning department in the city of Rapid City, and they basically said, this is your issue, you fix it. And we went back and said, this is your plat, you've said you always need to fix them, so we're at a stalemate right now with that. Going off of that, they've titled, told us in the past and what they've told us in this one instance right now. So before we get clear and precise clarification on what's going on, uh, we want to make this, have this continued. As further note, Jesse Reeve from the Public Works Department, who does their septics over there, has no problem with the new proposed site. It's really a paperwork issue. Because where they're proposing to put the new drain field, he has no problems with. Again, it's really just a, a paperwork issue because they'd be putting a driveway over what's designated on the property as a drain field.
So, with that said, is the recommendation still to continue it then?
The staff's recommendation is to continue until we can figure out what's going on, and really find out from the city what, what they can and cannot do or should and shouldn't do.
Mr. Chair?
You go ahead, Rich.
If the city's sewer inspector or, or septic tank inspector, uh, doesn't have any issues with it, I guess the, the, could you help me understand the paperwork clarification that has to happen?
Do you have new information?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. But the paperwork clarification is on the plat, there's a sec, there's the two drain fields that are dedicated for this one lot. So if you look on page four or five of the staff report, the proposal for this administrative office is to put the driveway over a drain field. You know, unless that drain field is built in a certain way, you don't drive over the drain fields. So, because the requirement of the plat is to put, to have the two drain fields dedicated, um, that's where we balked at it.
Okay.
But apparently there's some new information as of this morning? Okay, from Amy. Is that okay, Commissioner?
All right, come on.
Hi, good morning, Amy Rittering, Planner One. Um, I have been on the phone with the agent, who's Jim Martin. He, um, received the staff report on Thursday, read it, saw that it was being continued, saw the reasons why. Um, we had a lengthy conversation about, um, the notes that were on the plat. Um, he understands and agrees that, yes, while it is, if you take a look, um, uh, it should be on the PowerPoint, it's one of the last slides. There's, on this one, the right there, that's-
Sorry.
Sorry. So this is, go back. So these are the two drain fields that we're having, some, that was the issue that came up. Um, that reserved spot right there, primary, we don't have a problem with, they're using it, that site. The next slide, so this parking lot area at the top, yeah. So that's kind of where the issue comes with, is it overlaying, is it not? And Jim and I had the conversation about, okay, let's vacate the note on the plat with Rapid City, um, and file a miscellaneous document that will note, um, this backup reserved area that's noted on the site plan. We just have to have it legally filed. Um, and that's, that's what's been discussed, and that's where we are.
Any questions?
I, does staff have any other concerns with the CUP application, uh, other than the, the, the septic layout on the plat?
At this point, no, we just have to make sure that all of the proper documentation is filed and done.
Sure, sure.
And that, those, because it was something that was done, it was a requirement of the plat back in two thousand and eleven, when they originally created the lot, so we have to honor that.
So, Amy, are you suggesting that, um, with this new approach, in terms of filing these documents, the vacating of, of this, that, that note on the plat and so on, then we don't, it doesn't need to be continued, we can, uh, prove it today, is that what?
If it gets filed.
I would like to see it get filed. I would like to see that paperwork. Um, I believe those types of applications and things are done routinely in-house at the city, so it's a little bit more of a, it's a-
They would have to have it drawn up, an exhibit drawn up and recorded to register deeds, and then, once we get the document number that it was recorded, we're fine with it. We've had these situations similar to this, and others that are similar to this, where we've relied on it being done at a future date, and it doesn't get done, and it causes headaches down, years down the line. So we always just, as much as we can to have it done first.
So do you want this continued until that paperwork is filed?
Can I speak, did you file it this morning? No, I didn't. Can I speak though? When, it's up to him.
Go ahead, sir, state your name.
All right. I'm Ted Schultz, A two S Engineering, I'm a civil engineer. Working on this site for about ten or twenty years. Uh, the Colonial Pine and Hills Sanitary District is a governmental agency that has about four and thirty water customers. They do have their own septic ordinances also in their sanitary district. I'm representing them today. Uh, I could tell you a lengthy story, but I know you just went through a lengthy story, so I'm not gonna do that, but we, uh, we under, agree with you, uh, that this needs to be vacated. I can do this in a few hours, okay? And I talked with staff last week, uh, there was no conclusion-
hours, okay? And I talked with staff last week. Uh, there was no conclusion, there was no answer. Um, I didn't get an answer last week, so we, we probably could have gotten this resolved before it got this far. But what I'd like you to do is approve this with a contingency that, uh, it's approved once that is filed and Register of Deeds provides a number to, to staff. That's all I would ask.
So basically, PJ, we could go with, you know, approve, um, CU 1739, um, with one condition. Basically, he meets the one condition.
Well, conditional use permits usually have multiple conditions, and that's what we're just addressing, but, um, would anybody want us to talk to Jim Martin, the actual applicant?
That'd be fine.
I mean, I don't think he'd probably object to moving forward, but we did hear that he, as of this morning, he's heard he was okay with it. Um, and if he, if he has new information, then maybe he'd be okay with approving it today with conditions, but we need some time to draw up the conditions of this.
Okay, so, still, then you would like to see it continue so we can get clarification.
How do you think Jim would feel? Sorry, come on up. My only thing is if Jim was spoken to by staff today and said one thing, and then we're doing another, and Jim is the actual applicant, um, I would just like to have, keep, keep Jim in the loop.
Gotcha. No, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding of it as well. Um, this was something, I routed this twice, actually, with the, um, with the plat when I found it and saw the reserved drainfield. So this is something that I communicated with Jim, saying, "Hey, this is something that has come up. It's not a new thing." Um, and I did wait to, um, give any fi, further information, because I was waiting for Rapid City to give me some feedback, um, on what they would like to do further plating-wise, on, to give further guidance to the agent. Um, I personally would like to continue this, so I can give further thought and concise conditions versus rushing it and just really throwing it all together.
Just in case there's a snag?
Yeah.
I'm checking.
You know, yes, it is an office space in SRD, um, while there's, it should be fairly straightforward. This was supposed to be fairly straightforward until we found the plat. So I would really prefer to continue it, so we can get those conditions done and get it done right.
Mr. Chair.
Um, right.
Mark.
Sorry.
I would move to continue this until our next Planning Commission meeting, in, out of respect for our planning department, and I request.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, um, I guess I'd like to point out that the original recommendation was to continue it to the first December meeting. Is that what you'd still like, or would you like it continued to our next November meeting?
Here's the thing, I'm not well enough first on how quickly we can get things through the Rapid City Planning Department, um, with vacating and getting things recorded with our deeds office, what that timeframe is. I'm hoping that that December 1st meeting will get that done.
Okay.
I would not, sorry, I wouldn't be object if you wanted to do it in the first meeting in November. That way, if it does get.
It's second.
Second meeting in December, November, because if it does get done, then we can hear it. If it doesn't, then just continue it again. But I, I believe, it can get done fairly fast.
Go ahead, Ted.
Thank you. Um, just to let you know, we actually have a State of South Dakota DNR approved septic permit from July for this property. Uh, we've been working with city staff and county staff since May on this project, and this isn't, you know, the first time we've come to this. So this is, this recent issue did come up, uh, from that plating issue. Didn't think it was that big of a deal, that it's really an administrative thing. Um, if you don't know, about 2009, '10 is really when they started putting their reserved drainfield on the plats, and it's really not an actual dimensioned area on the, on the plat. They just want to make sure that you have a narrow enough space for a reserved drainfield and a new drainfield. And so those are the two reasons for that. Um, I agree that it needs to be changed. I think it's a simple vacation, eight and a half by 11 document that can be filed at the courthouse. The other thing is, this is in the county, this is not in the city, okay? Um, we need a county building permit for this. We don't need anything from the city for this, to be honest. We already have the, the drainfield permit from the state. And Jim, if Jim was here, um, Jim, I, I had, I was out of town when Jim submitted this. Otherwise, I'd be listed here as an agent. Jim submitted it. Here's the deal, is we have a contractor ready to start this week on the foundation. If we can't start until December with the foundation, then we're into more frost, more issues like that. And so if you ask Jim, would he want this approved today? Yes, he would, because otherwise, we've already had the contractor tell us, if we get delayed, we're gonna have to pay for, uh, heating charges to throw out the ground if the ground gets frozen. So it, I, I totally allow, I, I, I guess I was expecting to see a, a staff report, one with, had a, you know, condition to it. I don't see that this is any condition outside of normal. I think this is a normal condition. In fact, I think it's pretty simple.
Thank you, Ted.
Can I ask, can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Are they just looking to put a cement slab down? Do some excavating of cement slab? Because you don't have a basement?
We just have, yeah, four-foot frost walls is what we're gonna start on.
Oh, so you're gonna go up, not just flat?
Well, no.
More than just a slab?
It's more than a slab, but we're actually going to frost, four-foot concrete foundation wall.
Because we allow cement slabs to be done without a building permit up to 10,000 square feet, so that would have been a.
That might have been an issue.
One thing that could have been done. And you're right, it's not located inside the city limits. It is within their plating jurisdiction, though.
Correct.
And septic jurisdiction, so it's within at least a mile, which is where we are.
So if I understand, we're in the middle of a motion?
Correct, I haven't had a second, though.
Restate your motion so that we.
My motion was to move to continue until the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Do we know the date on that one?
Yeah, it's November 27th.
November 27th?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. There's a motion?
And just to add, at this point in time, I looked at the weather. It looks like we got seven days of good weather anyway coming up, but.
Not hearing a mo, a second. Is there a second to continue? I think it's.
I'll second, just for discussion.
Alright, second, motion and second, so discussion.
Uh.
Questions or concerns?
It seems to me that th, this is semantics at, at this point. Um, what I've heard is that the city, uh, septic inspector, uh, is just fine with it, um, and that the, the plan, uh, put forth illustrates where the new septic is going. Um, and, and I guess at this point, I've seen a lot of situations like this where the, the building of the foundations and those types of things have been allowed to move forward, um, pending some of this stuff, and so, even through the, the commission. Um, and so it, I, I don't understand, I, I guess, uh, the reservation on holding this up. Um, I, uh, have my own construction projects that are fighting frost as well, so I, I get the urgency, but, uh, what's the concern, I guess, in, in, in delaying this few weeks if we can put the contingency on there that, uh, this thing stops if you guys don't get the appropriate paperwork?
PJ, did you hear the question?
Yep, I'm trying to put together the conditions and writing that one right now, so, uh, we've, it, those have come back to bite us in the past, especially on a property like this. This isn't a residential, it's a little bit different.
Sure.
Um, so we're just being a little bit more proactive than we have been in the past.
What conditions are you thinking need to be added?
Well, it's a, it's a conditional use permit, so it's kind of the typical ones, except for that one. I was talking about that this be done before a building permit is obtained.
Mr. Chair, but I think what I'm hearing is that your ability to construct your foundation and stuff is not gonna be held up by continuing this, correct? You can do your foundation work without a building permit, right?
What we do is, we allow people to do foundations, but they can't do anything that goes up. So if they're going to, like, pour a parking lot without curbs, or a basketball court, so a cement slab, kinda like what you saw with the Evangelistos.
Mm-hmm.
Those are permitted without building permits up to 10,000 square feet. Anytime you go up on those, then required building permits, because then people are doing substantial.
Because I'm seeing you say you're not delaying his construction, and he's shaking. He said, "Yes, you're delaying my construction," so he.
No, we would be. I'm just explaining.
Oh, okay.
What we normally do allow, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so if there was any work that could be done that didn't do those frost walls.
So the digging.
The digging can be done.
The excavation and stuff.
Yeah, but that wouldn't take seven days. I'm sure that would go a lot faster, so.
Right.
So we're just writing some conditions right now.
Any further questions?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that this, that we find a way to make this happen today. I don't see any reason why the, the commission here can't come up with a restriction that, that says that the appropriate paperwork needs to be filed. I mean, we require people to sign a statement of understanding within 10 days on virtually everything that, that this commission does. If the paperwork doesn't show up within X number of days, then it can be stopped, can it not?
Could be, absolutely. Um, my quick question would be, would you need us to table this so you could formulate your standard, uh, conditions, so that we can bring it up at the very end of the meeting?
Yes.
Would that give you enough time to at least get your standard thoughts on there?
It would, if you can give me one minute?
Sure.
Just right now.
So my motion is to table it, then?
Alright, motion to table?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Yeah, see, I'd be the one presenting, so I wouldn't be working on it, so I had to ask Brittany to do it. So what Brittany's passing out right now is the, uh, building permit report.
Um, we skipped item 19.
Yeah, we're supposed to be on.
Item 19, sorry.
My bad.
Yep.
Item 19, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from their October 23rd, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Uh, except for the appeal of conditional use permit 1736 for Garrett and Kathleen Shields was heard at November 7th Board of Commissioners meeting, and the Board of Commissioners upheld the Planning Commission's decision for approval, but to only allow four cabins instead of the eight as requested by the applicant.
That was that one property where they were putting in the four, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Any questions? Alright, items?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Point of order, I believe. There was a motion on the floor. We should have probably voted on it.
We did.
No, there was no substitute motion made. He, he made a motion, he said, "I'm gonna make a substitute motion." I'm just making sure we're doing this right. He said he's gonna make a substitute motion. He didn't make a substitute motion. He made a new motion.
To table.
To table. Which means that my motion is still open. Gonna have to be voted on. We can all vote no, that's fine.
Even though you tabled the whole item?
Item? I thought it's still hanging out there.
She's nodding yes.
We good?
I think you're fine.
Okay.
Well, then you can come back to your motion once.
Deal with that.
Right.
The discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was done right.
My apologies, if it was not.
No, I, I mean, that's kinda why you do a secondary motion sometimes, is to adjust accordingly, but I, I guess I didn't think it through how that would have affected there, but, oh, good, good questions. Alright, um, item 19, any further discussion on that item? Any questions? No? So item 20, items from the public. Good morning.
Joyce Shagru. Uh, I'm here this morning. I was interested in, in, uh, item number 13 on the agenda with a multifamily dwelling for a VHR. And, uh, I, I agreed with the condition that was put in, that only one family should be renting it at a time. And I believe that we need further discussion on what to do with multifamily. This is the first one, I think, that's come before you. Uh, I don't recall, PJ probably has a better recollection of what came up during the committee when we did the last ordinance, uh, but, um, we did the one acre because it spoke to density, and now if we have the one acre, and then if we would allow multifamily, what does that do to density? And I don't have an answer for that, uh, but I think it does need discussion. So I wanted to bring that to your attention today, and, uh, my hunch is that planning, the staff will be discussing that, but if we could be proactive before another one hits us and have a policy in place, it would be better. Because, uh, I'm aware that although people don't attend like I do, they're watching what comes out of here, and if we set a precedent, or if we don't have the policy discussion before it happens, uh, it gets much more complicated. So that's what I wanted to say to you today, is, is be aware of that, and, uh, at a minimum, uh, ask the planning staff to have a discussion about how we should deal with multifamily, and will it take an ordinance change, or should we just not allow them at all? And it gets back to density, and, and needs some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Joyce?
Only a comment. Mr. Chair, is the, um, density typically on these VHRs is set by septic requirements by the state. So I guess whether there's one, one building and 12 people, or one building with two separate buildings with six people on each side, I'm not seeing the, I'm not, I'm not following you 100% because it, it's based on the septic requirements.
I, I just think it needs discussion. Uh, because I agree with you, I already went through that.
Okay.
That thought process. Does it make a difference, or doesn't it? I just think it needs to be discussed, and maybe it does not make a difference to have two families in the same dwelling for vacation home rental. Maybe it does. I don't know. I just think it needs to be discussed before it comes up again and hits you with one that, you know, this one you approved, this one family at a time, and unless it's contested, that's the way it will go. But just be proactive, is what I'm saying, and have the discussion.
Thank you, Joyce. Anything further? Any other audience members like to speak? Seeing none, that carries us to item 21. Unless PJ is ready for us to.
Uh, we can, if you'd like, you can untable it, they're fine.
Taken.
We have the conditions ready, we believe.
You're ready to untable? Alright, motion to.
I'll make a motion to untable. Uh, it was item.
10.
10.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion's back on the table, so.
Procedurally, I'd like to make a substitute motion that, uh, um, well, I, I'd like to understand what the conditions are, uh, but, uh, would be the approval of, uh, the CUP. 17 dash 39.
Okay.
I meant to need a second on the substitute.
Discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, so we're on item 10.
Yes.
So if you can refer to page four, four of item five. This is another conditional use permit that was extended, so four, four of page five.
Item.
Okay, so we'd be looking to keep, we, we'd be looking for the approval to, with, uh, condition one being the same, unaltered. Condition two being the same. Condition three being changed to state that the structure only be used, um, as an administrative office for the Colonial Pines, uh, Sanitary District. So that would be changing that one. Conditions four, five, six, and seven would remain the same. We'd be adding a new condition to state that the applicant vacate and relocate the reserved drainfield through the RC, uh, Rapid City Planning and, and zoning, and record a document with, oh, let's change that. Sorry, Jerry. Uh, that the applicant vacate and relocate the reserved drainfield, uh, through a recorded document with the Register of Deeds. That way, however it gets done, it gets done. Doesn't pigeonhole them. And then condition eight, uh, we would just re, reword the beginning that says, "This conditional use permit reviewed on December 18th, 2007, at December 18th, 2017, comma, on a complaint basis, or is deemed necessary." So that would be our conditions.
Did you say review 2017?
December 18th, 2017.
Okay.
So last meeting in December, which by the way, is a 2:00 in the afternoon meeting, not a 9:00 AM. Throw that out there. And I guess there's a question, hold on.
Derby 9?
Derby 9, yep, sorry. Yep. So we're just using the conditions from item five as a template.
And so the meeting in December 8, on December 18th, is to check to make sure that the appropriate paperwork is filed?
We'll check before, it just gives a little buffer, yeah. And then the yearly review would be in December.
Okay. Does the applicant's agent okay with the conditions?
It gets approved today.
Yes.
Unless it's appealed, but it gets approved.
Um, I'm good with what you guys have written down, and I appreciate the expediency.
Okay, so the motion is, because there was a motion and a second, but what the motion was.
To approve.
This specific.
Substitute motion. Or do you have to undo the first motion? Maybe I should ask that question first?
No, your substitute motion takes care of it.
Yeah, substitute motion takes care of it. Alright, so that's where we're at, to approve this as a substitute motion, correct? Any further discussion? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Boy, that was an interesting one right there. Alright, that puts us now to, it's item 21.
Item 21, items from staff, item A, building permit report, which you have in front of you. You have the, uh, actual report. You have the actual report and then the Excel sheet. So building... Single-family homes are up over 25% over this time last year. We're up in a lot of categories, down in Public Works. But again, those big drops that are in red are because we reformatted our numbering system. So we're really... After we go through this for a year, then we'll be... Really have a one-to-one oranges-type of look. Overall, we have 625 building permits as of the end of last month, compared to 554 last year. So we're up over 13% in the number of building permits and up over 16% in the valuation over this time last year.
Any questions? All right. Next.
Item B, and then we do have a C item. Item B is Section 204G Special Animal Keeping Regulations. The interviews for this committee were heard at the last Board of Commissioners meeting. They had five applicants. The Board of Commissioners have requested that it be re-advertised again, to have more applicants apply. So that's what's going to be done through the Commissioner's office.
Did they have a specific number that they wanted on the committee? Mark, do you know, since you were there?
I believe there were five. Five is what they were looking for.
They want five on the committee?
Right.
Were there...
That's right, you weren't there at that part of it. I'm sorry. I don't think you were there.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Was there concerns with the individuals that applied, or they just want a bigger pool?
Bigger pool, yeah.
Well, the question that I've been asked is that, does the people that are interested, do they have to be outside of incorporated areas in the county? In other words, do they have to be a county resident outside of a city?
As far as I know, we don't restrict who can apply. I know that recommendation has been made by one of the commissioners, that we get some people that are outside of the incorporated cities. But our office doesn't take in the applications.
So in other words, it doesn't... They're welcome to apply regardless of where they live.
Pretty much.
As long as it's in the county, and then it is the... That can be a criteria or not in the selection, yeah.
Any further questions for PJ? Any other applicants since then?
Not that I'm aware.
And are they going to extend it if they don't get any more applicants? I mean, I'm just wondering how is this going to get pushed off if there's not any more interest in it? That would be my biggest question.
I can't speak to that. I don't know. And you weren't there, sorry, so you probably don't know either. I hope it wouldn't be more than one continuation. Pretty much of the applicants that came up, everybody mentioned chickens. But the commission office staff did make it clear that this isn't just about chickens. It's much bigger than that.
It is bigger than that. I agree.
And, you know, I don't want it, but I don't want... I don't personally want them to get in and have shock once they realize that this isn't just about poultry.
Correct.
So...
Good point. All right, item C?
Item C? Yep. You got the flyer for the holiday luncheon, which we do every year for the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. So if you could RSVP at your leisure with Jerry. We're looking to hold it on December 4th, which is a Monday, at 11:30. And Jerry can tell you the rest once you give her a call or an email. Other than that, nothing further to report, sir.
What's... So our next... This is just a quick question, because it's dealing with the dates in December. When's our Planning Commission in December, the one that's thought at 2?
The 4th.
The 4th?
So make sure you have it over by then.
Okay, there you go. I was like, I thought you said that a while ago, and I was like, wait a minute, it's the same day, okay.
Yeah, so we've done that in the past. Usually, December tends to be a little bit slower. We haven't really slowed down too much in the last three years. It's been fairly consistent. But that gives... Since you guys are already here, and it gives staff that's not here time to set up upstairs for everybody.
Fair enough. All right.
Repeat that. When's our meetings in December?
December 4th at 9:00 a.m. December 18th at 2:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
All right, items from the membership, item 22. Anybody got anything? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey, Jerry, five minutes.